Good evening, everyone. We will call the City Council meeting to order for August 14 on the 2014 budget. First order of business is roll call.
Estes.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Leighton.
Yes.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have Coram.
And we will now recognize Julie Norwood from Canyon Lake Church of God for the invocation. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Many years of service on the city with the city water department and also the city council, so we'll acknowledge that. Heavenly Father, as we gather in this place tonight, it is with gratefulness that you have allowed us to see yet another day. And Father, things may not be exactly how we thought they should be or could be, but Father, we thank you for life. And Lord, as we remember this fellow servant of this city, we are reminded that this temporary assignment is that, just temporary. And God, while these men and women of our city gather in this place tonight to do the necessary things for this city's forward progression, I ask, Father, for your blessing upon their lives for their service to us. I pray, Father, that this meeting would be found in decency and in order for the upbuilding of this city and the furtherance of your name. I pray, Father, for Mr. O'Grady's family as they la -- as they grieve the loss of the separation of death that comes to all of us. And Lord, I just thank you for the city that we live in. I thank you for the many diversities of people and that yet together we are common because we all call this place home. We speak blessings upon your people in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gavel is yours.
Thank you, sir. You relax. We'll take.
All right.
Take your napkin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Anybody want to talk about uranium?
No.
Didn't think so. That's a joke. Okay. I believe our intent this evening is to put together a, basically, a final document so you can get the work done by September, correct? So I have made a list and I hope it's relatively accurate. If I've missed anything, please correct me. On the dollar sides, and I'm not asking for a decision, just these are what I have for discussion. And one is the Humane Society, the decrease of 27.8. Dispatch Center, I have a shortage of 194. Compass, which is 197.8, which is in the contingency council fund. Do we want to discuss performing arts? No? Yes? Journey Museum is 35,000. The stormwater drainage, financial software. Parks and Rec, pavement repair, economic development, the county drop of 25,000. And I believe that's it. Am I missing anything? There are other theoretical things like inventory of equipment and so forth, but I did not include those. Yes, Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question. Would I want to ask a question like, let's say, Pat - Patsy has got a list of like eight sidewalk or bike path projects that she's wanting to apply for grants for.
Yes.
And we will be requiring matching funds. Is it, I mean, where do we go or do we need to have money available for our matching funds so that if, you know, I would assume we need to all get together and prioritize what she's going to want, but we need matching money. To me, it's a good way to leverage our projects to, for to apply for grants, so I guess, where in the budget do we, I mean, is it miscellaneous capital improvements?
Good question.
Shake your head at me.
So we have the Federal Highway Bike Path Program. That's what we're talking about? Any other that we need to talk about? Water, wastewater, if there are any, they would fund those, but what comments? Is that the only one that we're aware of that's possibly going to be out there next year? Pauline?
I guess I'm not aware of any more grants. The department should be budgeting any matching fund requirements already in their budget if they're aware of them at the time of budget process.
That would probably be a public works payment, not planning, right? If they do sidewalks.
Sidewalks, I'm not sure which department takes it. If it, but if it's a transportation planning, it's through Community Planning and Development Services, their budgets. And so they should have budgeted for the matching funds already in their budget if they haven't.
I'd have gone to suspect that's only planning, so I think if we're talking about concrete on the ground, we'd probably need to check on that.
I have no way of telling. You'd have to ask Brett that. And unfortunately, you see who's here and who's not, so.
Okay, other items. That's a good one.
No.
I can go around the corner. Yes.
I will tell you, during my presentation, I talked about going out for an RFP for the publishing of the newspaper and although I still plan on doing that, I've had phone call conversations with Jackie from Native Sun News and they are not interested in taking away all of the business from the Rapid City Journal. And right now, we have given some publications to them in the forms of job postings, election notices, and like the comprehensive plan notices will also be published in that paper. But at this point, there are, it's limited legal publications and no minutes are being published. And they would like to see where some minutes are being published, but I cannot do that, or I shouldn't say I can't do that. I do not feel comfortable picking and choosing which sets of minutes would be published in their paper. And so then it would have to be all of the minutes to be published if the council wants to do that. The easiest way if you, to do that, if you choose to publish in two papers would be to designate them both as legal publications. And then all public notices, all legal notices would have to go in both papers. As I said, I'm still planning on doing an RFP to see if perhaps we can get a lower price from our providers. But at this point, if you want two legal newspapers, two sets of publications going out there, you would have to consider additional funding in my budget.
How much?
You know, based on preliminary cost estimates, I would say half again as much as what's there, which would be close to about forty, forty-five thousand dollars.
So say fifty? Fifty thousand? Okay. Let's just go around and kind of make sure if everybody has an opportunity to, if there's anything they want to add. I did not mention the CPI word yet. Anything we're missing on that list of things? Yes, dispatch is here. I have dispatch down at 194,000. Is that correct?
The only other thing I'd like to see, I did watch the video from Monday as far as I could until it started cutting out and it was cutting out when Amanda was talking about revenue sources or revenue streams.
Okay.
If it would be okay to have a little recap on that, I'd appreciate that. Since the city's site is down right now, I couldn't watch the video.
Thank you. If it's appropriate, I think we'll go around and I was going to discuss where our shortfalls are and then how we would pay for them and we could capitalize. Once we've come up with that, we can summarize our revenue sources. Is that reasonable? Or Pauline can answer. Yes.
I was just going to ask you to go through your list again because I want to make sure and compare them to the list I have.
I've got the Humane Society at 27.8. If I'm off, please correct me. Dispatch at 194. Compass is 197.8, but that's already in the council contingency fund, if I believe. So that's, we just need to move it. Performing Arts, I know that's in negotiation. They wanted, what, 30 days to come back, so we don't need to worry about that tonight. I'm sorry. What are, what's their, what they would like to get? Is it 212,000? Do I remember that right? Bonnie?
That's the first number that they brought to us, but that would be divided between 2013 and 2014. They have a different fiscal year. But they're also going to be looking much more closely at their business plan. And they have some people that have more business experience involved in now and they'll be looking at that and so, so I really don't have an amount right now.
So 212,000, that's for two years?
I think it's like 18 months. Because I think it's part of this year and part of next year. But I think before we use a number.
I don't think that's on the table very well anyway, but, okay.
Right, that we need to.
All right.
Unless we just want to say 50,000 just for conversation.
Chad, anything that I missed in that list? I'm sorry, I didn't, I guess I didn't finish. Excuse me for a minute. Journey is $35,000 for update and security and cameras, correct? Stormwater drainage, which is an issue we've talked to with Terry Walster. Thirty-five? Yes. Stormwater at 7.50. Financial software, I don't have a number on that. I put a note down here in Parks and Rec for pavement repair or parking and golf or tennis court. Economic development, county drop of 25,000. And then the new question from Brad on matching money for sidewalk funding and your comment about newspapers. That's it.
Okay, can I add one more?
Well, I think you said Humane Society restored that funding. We also talked about Ellsworth Air Force Base to make up that county shortfall. And then there was talk about increasing 27,000 to Parks and Rec to get back to the 2010 staffing for seasonal.
How much was that?
The number given the other night was 27,000.
For Rec for seasonal?
Mm-hmm.
It was to add, to bring it back to 2010 levels, which was 27,000 more.
Correct, that we've already added.
What was the task force shortage? Twenty-five?
I believe that was 25.
Okay. That was just something I put in a couple of years ago. They were, didn't have any money for repair of their parking lots and tennis courts. And I asked Jeff if he had in there and they said yes and no, so I think maybe we put a little extra money in there. It might help, but it's, I don't know. Sue Park and I know a lot of them do. Every single one of them needs it, so that's the issue and I think they're underfunded. Anything else, Chad? If not, Brad? Richie? Okay. Tracy? Pauline? You can add. You're kind of one of us. Sure. Bonnie? Anything? John? Bill? Anything you want to add? Do you have something on wildlife management or is that, we're okay there?
That's within their budget.
Don't want to change it? Don't want to add? We're more concerned about adding unless there's something you want to cut, I guess. That's what this is about.
It would start a major argument if we talked about overpayment of the guys who are shooting the deer. And we had written into the plan the need for ride alongs over the shoulder evaluations that didn't happen last year and that's why I said if it doesn't happen this year, I'm going to flip the switch.
Okay, I think I'll put her down. Steve?
No, I, it's all covered in what we have so far.
Amanda?
Just based on my notes, we had also listed to increase the demolition amount for substandard and we had demolition amount to be increased for substandard or condemned housing as a possibility. And we also had consideration because Pauline Sumption had mentioned going out for a lease purchase on the software and possibly looking at a different funding source for the financial software package. There was also talk about even though Wavy was allocated 100,000 for the 2014 budget about possibly needing more than that depending on if there are other revenue streams.
Change. So far, she says she's only down 400, so. Right. Want to wait on that and see if we have problems later or anyone?
I would say 400 dollars, Lawrence.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
400 dollars.
What was also mentioned was the mayor and council travel budget, travel budget may need more if people were going to go to the municipal or the, not municipal league, maybe it is municipal. There you go, League of Cities.
What is the travel budget right now?
I'd like to go back to Paris.
The other one was the possibility of making up, and you may have said this one, but making up the county's withdrawal of their 25,000 for economic development. You got that one? And then, got that. You mentioned the tennis courts and the parking lot for Parks and Rec. Performing Arts at the Ellsworth Air Force Base, I think Pauline mentioned, and that's what I have on my list.
So they're around the corner, so I think the other thing is we need to talk about that we, we're not taking anything out of the budget. So now we need to be honest about how we're going to pay for it. How's that? Or we don't do it? There are no credit cards. So, Bonnie?
I believe one of the items was about cutting the travel budget for our offices for the mayor and council office.
Well, cut or increase, there's two sides of that, but yeah, okay.
I think it, but you'd said there were no cuts, but I just wanted to say there is on the table. And I can't remember if it was 10 or 12,000, 10,000.
Well, that's, I guess what we have to discuss is the travel budget, mayor council, do we increase or decrease? And we're right now at, you said 16,000?
Right now, Jerry, for 2014, it's at 22.3.
Twenty-two. How much have we spent this year? Not very much.
I think.
Can't check on the website right now.
I think our history of recent years, I think we could easily cut 10 grand off of it based on their actuals and stuff.
Well, Bonnie, I think one issue is that I've suggested to members of this council to be looking at traveling to League of City type meetings and, yes, Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're talking about a cut arbitrarily. Are we, are we, do we want to cut for a purpose? I mean, are we looking to fill a hole somewhere? Should we identify what those holes are and then go and see what we might want to redistribute perhaps before cutting arbitrarily?
I'm not supporting cutting it at all, but that's been brought up, so I'd say we need to look at why. And if we are not using it, and you could use it to make up the Ellsworth fund, but that's not enough anyway.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Could we go through the items that you identified?
Yep.
We'll keep a list of.
That's what we're going to do next. Do you need a copy? Do you want to make copies of this?
Make a list of the ones that are a hole and we'll go and figure out what we want to do.
Close, it's printed.
Just for, you had asked a question about what's budgeted. Right now, we have 22.3 budgeted, same as 2013. In 2012, 11,765 was used, 2011, 5,824, 2010, 10,933. 2009 was 18,000. 2008 was 27.8 and then 2007 it was 46.
For the benefit of Charity, while we've got a moment waiting for this shopping list, would you mind capsulating the revenue side for her and maybe a refresher for us? Okay.
Yeah, now that I was eating. Since the website's done, I don't think there's that link. I don't know. Was this linked then, Charlie? Okay, I don't know how to operate this thing.
Can we put on the list 500 dollars for the RSVP group for recognition of their, more special recognition for them, and they don't have to do a fundraiser match for that. I had mentioned that on the first night. They have a lot, what, 100 and something people over 85 volunteering, so.
That's not on, that's not on the list that's being copied right now, so.
Thank you.
I lost my page.
Okay, as we were talking about on Monday night, I kind of went into in-depth explanations of the different funding sources. And again, I just want to state, I'm not suggesting any of these are the correct funding source or a revenue stream. I was just trying to identify all possible revenue streams that can be considered when looking at the budget. And these are basically just the revenue streams that are already on the revenue page that is in the 2014 budget. Focus.
Thank you, Sam.
So.
We're on live mics and we're being televised, so.
So first of all, just to finalize and also what I talked about on Monday night, was taking a look at the approved budgets that council had approved and then also taking a look at what the more true or transparent budget actually was, which actually takes into account the added supplemental appropriations that were done throughout the year. And then also taking a look at the revenues that came in versus what was actually budgeted. And so just to recap on that one, the total operating revenue from 2011 estimated was roughly 41.3 million. That's before interdepartmental charges, pelts, and then the barber building cemetery and wildland fires. So basically, that was your revenue stream and that is what would have matched the operation side of it. What actually came in in 2011 was 45.4 million dollars. So we actually took in more money than what was budgeted originally or what was approved. But the other thing you have to take into account is any supplemental appropriations that were done throughout 2011. Instead of going back that far, I basically just requested to know what was carried over as a designated or encumbered cash into the 2012 budget. There was 544,000 dollars that was basically carried over into the 2012 budget. So if you basically take the total revenues actual and So if you basically take the total revenues actual and, um, add back in that, uh, five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, we actually had a budget of forty-seven million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars for 2011. Of that, four hundred and forty-four was encumbered but had not been spent in 2011, so it had to be carried over to the 2012. The council, the city council approved a budget of 2012 of forty-seven point, I think it says, eight, forty-seven point eight million dollars. Then right off the bat, we had a supplemental appropriation that we had to carry over that five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and then throughout the year for 2012, we actually approved, brought forward by the department heads that were, was needed for this budget, an additional five point five million dollars in supplemental appropriations throughout the year. That actually made the approved budget that the city council approved of fifty-three point nine million dollars. What actually came in on operating revenue was fifty-two million, actually almost fifty-three million, when the original budget was forty-seven point three, so, uh, you know, a lot of things came in. There was some money from the DOT and some other governmental agencies, but also, uh, property tax came in a little, uh, more, and sales tax came in more. So the supplemental appropriation by the department heads that came through, that five point five million dollars was actually there, and so, um, we didn't get into the hole, we didn't have to dip into undesignated cash because the revenue was being generated during the same year. Of that total budget, what actually was spent was forty-nine point three million dollars. Three point five million dollars was actually, had to be carried over into this year's budget, the 2013 budget. So then if you actually take a look at the 2013, the city council approved, um, a budget for 2013 of fifty point three million dollars. We had to carry over the three point five, and then already this year, we've had a total of four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars that was supplementally appropriated into this budget. So really, what the city council has approved to date is fifty-four point eight million dollars for 2013. And then Pauline supplied the actuals through June, which is kinda nice, and the significant point in here is that we actually already show to date roughly two point four million dollars extra in revenue, but I don't consider this available because we don't know how the rest of the year is gonna shake out yet. Sales tax could all of a sudden, you know, but really back off, and we may need that two point four million dollars just to finish out this year's budget. And then we have the, um, budget as proposed of fifty-three point five million dollars. So with that said, what basically makes up this revenue stream as revenue sources is number one, any undesignated cash, and what I had brought forth on Monday night is, looking at the revenue streams from 2011, 2012 through current, there's about two million dollars, two point two million, two point three million dollars that really is available in undesignated cash. Another revenue source is the CPI. The one thing about the CPI is if you take the CPI, it's sustainable. In other words, once you incorporate that into a budget, it really should be allocated towards those things that are gonna occur year after year after year because that money will be there year after year after year. Undesignated cash, once you spend it, it's gone. So really, it should be used for one-time funding. Another funding source is we could simply, and we, and we talked about this, we could reduce the percentage on the reserves. Currently, there's fifteen percent that is allocated for reserves, so in case a catastrophe happened or something happened drastically, we would have that extra money for operations for the general fund. Other revenue sources that, um, are on the revenue stream were estimating a higher sales tax growth, but as we talked about Monday night, the 2014 budget is actually estimated right now at the 2012 actuals, plus two percent, plus two percent. So that's kind of, in my opinion, stretchy anyways. It probably will be there, but a couple of the things that we talked about was there is the I-190 DOT construction that's gonna be occurring over the next two to three years, as well as Mount Rushmore Road is gonna go under construction. Another revenue source is estimating other funds growth, but if you look at those specific funds or revenue streams for the different funds throughout that two-page report that Pauline gave us, they're pretty well lined up. I mean, they're, they're pretty stretchy, too. I'm not so sure we could really add anything to that, but it's something to consider because the overall budget is an estimate. It's based on, you know, you usually try to forecast out based on historical data. Um, a couple other things that we can look at is, and what's been done in the past, but some opinion has been that it's not necessarily the correct way to infuse cash into the general fund, and that is charging the enterprise funds, whether you charge the enterprise funds as a pelt, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, or charge the enterprise funds as interdepartmental charges, and that basically, the difference there is, the payment in lieu of taxes is basically used by all governmental agencies for property that governmental agencies own, and you basically take the straight mileage rate of the city and apply it towards the value of the property. Those funds are actually supposed to help pay in the general fund for the services that any other property owner would pay for, or that expect for the taxation, property taxation that we pay, police, fire, parks and rec, you know, all of that. The interdepartmental charges charged out to the enterprise funds should actually be charged out for services rendered by any type of general fund source that is providing a service to the enterprise funds. They are two revenue streams, and as far as I can tell, there's no restrictions on what the city general fund can charge these ones, um, or at least I haven't had an answer to tell me whether there is a cap or a restriction, or if it has to make sense, or if we can just willy-nilly charge out to get more money into the general fund. The last one, and Pauline had mentioned, that basically the city, in case of an emergency, has roughly a hundred and four, a hundred and five million dollars in cash and investments, but they're basically allocated, so there'd have to be some loans and some documents and some tracking for auditing purposes, but basically, those types of things would be for more of an emergency, not preparing a budget. And then, um, the one other, or the last one, and we've kinda talked about a couple of items here tonight, and that is, you can also find more revenue by actually cutting some other line item in the budget, or reducing the amount that's allocated. So I think that's pretty much covers what we covered Monday night, if anybody else has any other questions, but those are pretty much the identified revenue sources or the revenue lines to consider when you're trying to look at adjusting the budget.
Okay, any questions, comments? No, if my math, anyone cannot read my writing. If you check your math excluding the performing, check my math, performing arts, that's not included, come in about one point two, one point three million add-ons, Chad.
Thanks, Jerry. Uh, on the stormwater drainage, isn't there eight hundred thousand dollars already sitting in that fund?
Yes and no. The eight hundred thousand was collected for, um, drainage basin fees for drainage basin improvements and pretty much committed by the developers in their intent and philosophy, and there's some legal question that probably should be spent there. With, that money should be going to, uh, basin improvements that are out there within the development community. I'm talking to Terry this afternoon, and Charity is with me, so she can add if I'm off, but he feels confidently that there's funding available that he can use, either the, he can borrow some money from the, the bond fund or do something. Looking at me like, oh, oh. He's, he's confident he can fund it. And what this would be, would be the startup money for next year would be maintenance only, and if for some reason this doesn't go through and it's budgeted, I would say we go out and do a bunch of maintenance contracts and shut her down, or if we're, uh, funded, which I hope we are, then we can start putting the process in order to begin, you know, the projects in 2015.
Thank you.
Has he talked to you about that, uh, Pauline? Okay. Okay, I understand.
SAB stands for Special Assessment Bond, and it was originated when we had a Special Assessment Bond and just Special Assessment Project. No, we, it's supposed to be for assessment projects where it gets repaid over time.
I think it's possible we could borrow the money from the drainage basin fee, but we better be prepared to put it back because that's part of the ordinance, if the ordinance goes through. Terry's confident he can get it done. I believe him. Bonnie.
Do you want us to discuss this right now, or are we gonna go back up to the top of the list and work our way down?
Top one I have is the Humane Society. The chief's recommendation is to stay with our budget. And?
Go ahead if you still have somewhere. Thank you, Chair, and I, uh, I spoke to the chief, or at least heard the chief speaking about this issue as well, um, but I think the reduction makes sense based on what he's telling us, and he's obviously a much better, a much more of a subject matter expert than myself, and my opinion is that, um, and his opinion, which is strong, I believe, is that they will be able to cover this themselves through their own initiative, which apparently hasn't been taken up to this point, and that this would be, uh, the very thing that would get them, um, to the point where they would be able to cover this themselves very easily, um, and that was kind of the gist of the way he put it, that this is, this cut, um, is the right thing to do because this is money that the taxpayers wouldn't have to fund and that they could easily cover themselves. So I'll be supporting, uh.
Okay. Chad?
Does any, I'm on the, I'm new appointee to that board, so I don't know exactly how it works, haven't had a meeting yet. Does anybody know, didn't you say, didn't they say that they raised seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars already as it is? So they're kinda already doing a good job of. Yeah, so I just, I guess that's my point, is they're already kind of doing a good job of raising money. I just think that, from my perspective, and I don't wanna argue with the chief, obviously, he knows better than I do, but I think that any time they spend on the streets, less time the police have to, so, thank you.
Yes, Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a time that I actually sat in on negotiations before Steve got involved with it, and at that time, there was discussion about changing the ordinance in which, um, they would get fines and that type of thing related to dogs and cats and, and the, nobody really wanted to push that too much at the time. There's also discussion about this licensing thing, and right now, or at that time, they were not pushing the licensing thing, and the discussion was, is they needed to start working for themselves as well, and that's another reason why Steve, um, based on conversations he and I have had, is pushing for this ten percent cut, is because they have started working on the licensing fees and they're, they're increasing their own revenue in that area, so it should cover this.
So, the consensus, if it's all right with this group, as we go down these, if I just ask for a show of hands or vote as we go line item by line item, is any further discussion on the Humane Society? Yeah, I see that. Bonnie?
How, they talked about disposing of dead dogs and cats. Um, I guess I don't really know how much of that they do, and if that's gonna be, like, we're gonna start having animals, like, is no one else responsible for doing that, or does the road people go do it?
If you're talking about wildlife kill, that's usually handled by either.
Well, I'm just telling you, you know, we see cats and dogs in the street somewhere where.
Domestic animals, okay, go ahead, Bonnie.
Uh, the other concern I have is that, um, the limited time they're gonna keep our city pets and their, if they're gonna reduce it down to three days. So that's, that's concerning to me. I wouldn't be willing to give them the full amount, but I might consider a partial amount, but, uh, anyway, I'm just hoping that we don't have a lot of upset people because they used to hold the animals for five days and now they're killed in three, so.
Okay, Richie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, some of the things we've talked about, especially in the past, uh, is that, let me rewind first. I've asked for a, uh, report from the Humane Society, and all I've gotten so far was what you see tonight is a three-page, uh, three-page document, um, showing what, what they doing, and I was looking for an outreach and I was looking for a marketing, and if they had a business plan put together and they haven't given us any of that information either, so if, if Chad will take forward another request to have that information and, um, for future reference, and then also if he would be willing, you're the liaison, correct?
Yes, but I've yet to have been in, to be in a meeting, and they've already had their meeting for the month, I believe, so.
If it's possible to care for it, another request, um, I'm looking to see if they can't pick up, so, I would like to see them put another FTE on, out there. Um, I'm reluctant to support, uh, any more, uh, funding for them because the amount of service calls or calls for service that the police department is doing for their after-hours, and that's been kind of a bone of contention with me on that, and they just don't seem to want to address that part.
Okay, Charity.
Thank you, Jerry. Another bone of contention to piggyback on to Richie. I mean, there's no doubt that they do provide a service, but I think in, you know, they are a private business, we need to think about how much value we're getting for, for what we, we do contribute, and are they living up to the expectations of what we are contracting them to do? I believe it was January of 2011, this council passed a nuisance ordinance on animals, and, um, it's being checked into now, but there are various cases that are popping up where that's just selectively not being enforced because they don't agree with it. Somebody, somebody in the organization just doesn't agree with it, so they're just not going to enforce it, which really, you know, makes it such that we have another worthless ordinance on the books. It was created to help bring peace to, to neighborhoods in that case of a nuisance issue. So, um, I think you will be seeing soon, I'm working with Allison on some things, you'll see some, um, ideas coming forward soon on that, but is that, do, do we want what we contribute to them to be reflective of the job we think they're doing? If they're not going to enforce the laws that we've put in place, then, you know, maybe that's a, a discussion that we need to have, pretty short order, so just something to put on your radars. Thank you.
Richie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just to follow up with what Charity is suggesting, too, is one of the other missing components that the Humane Society is, could utilize is a better cooperation with the local veterinarians. That's an avenue they haven't addressed either.
Yeah, they're working on that, actually.
In essence, Humane Society has some work to do, yes? And so I think we'll inflict a little pain on them by honoring the chief's request. How's that? All those, yes?
I was just gonna point out, attached to the handouts, not only is what cuts they're looking at, they're also looking at possibly requesting that the council increase fees by two dollars per license type, which right now, they're very cheap, and then the second and third pages are their fundraising and outreach efforts, so I think the only thing missing is the marketing plan that you're requesting.
I understand I don't need a motion, but I'd rather go through this and say if everyone pretty much supports what we're doing, let's kinda have a quick show of hands. Those in favor of honoring the chief's budget of, and decreasing the Humane Society by twenty-seven, eight, a hand raised, please. Decreasing, I'm sorry, decreasing. Decreasing, as the, with the budget. Leave the budget as is. We got one, two, three, four, five, six, done deal. Dispatch Center, one ninety-four. That's nothing we can argue about, right? One ninety-five? Now, that's for next year. This year is covered. I was so confused the other night because I think with ninety, one ninety-five is, and we're okay for this year. Yes?
Okay, watching this at home with the streaming video going, uh, 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 uh. What I heard him say is that he could pull it together this year if need be.
We were waiting till the end of the year, I thought, to see what it was. We were waiting till the end of the year, I thought, to see what it was.
That was one of the suggestions, there might be a surplus.
A great deal of confusion there, right there, but yes. Bonnie?
I would make a motion that we put this in the 2014 budget, the 194. Well, I'm just, I mean, I know it's not the ultimate motion, but I'm just trying to say for us to consider that topic. And the reason why is I just have a strong belief that the budget should be a conversation with the people so that they know as much as possible where their money is going and I just, you know, if they have to hobble together money out of their own budget, then it makes you question, well, maybe they didn't need all that money to begin with. So, you know, I don't want them to be Robin Peter to pay Paul and things like that. So I think it should come out of there, into the 2014 budget.
Steve? You have a question.
Thank you Chair, and I have a question for the finance officer. I could please, Pauline, can you, just for everybody, not everybody was here, but there was, most of that was, break that out, there were, most of it was one time and then the rest would be the ongoing portion.
Correct, there's, I think it was $64,000 a year for five years, beginning in 2014 and so that was like $125,000, $126,000, maybe $127,000. I'm not doing the math right now in my head, that's the one-time 2014 money.
Okay. I just want everybody to hear that because I don't know if you picked that up.
I think it's like $127,000 one-time money in 2014 and about $64,000 a year for five years, 2014 through 18.
For 2014, it's 194. Thank you, Pauline.
So the 195 rounded up will do us for 2014.
Correct.
Next year we'll worry about 2016, won't we? 2015, I'm sorry, I'm getting way ahead of you. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, if we use the same theory as we did with the Humane Society, maybe we should not give them the money and that'll teach them to get their budget straight next year. I mean, that's, if that's the logic we want to use.
The only difference, Mr. Estes, is that we have a contract with them that says that we pay 66% of whatever is left over.
Nice try, Brad. Bonnie?
Mr. Estes, I want to encourage you that if you want to fund something, to speak up and speak passionately for it because you, some of us may be on the fence, so you can rally votes for your cause. Second off, just because someone says something like teach them a lesson does not mean the other people believe that.
You just got swatted by the hen, let me tell you. I probably got beat up too there in that one. So, $195,000 for Dispatch Center? Well, she said round it up to 195. Going once, who's an auctioneer? Are you an auctioneer, Brad?
I would like a funding source though.
Well, I was going to go down to see what we add and subtract, then we'll come back to the funding source, so that's okay.
And then if you want to end up having to take away again, you'll go through that process?
Yep, but I think, yes.
Question if I may, Mr. Chair, to Pauline. Pauline, help me specifically, maybe us, understand, if we put 194, 195 into the 2014 budget to cover both the 64 and the 120 and the chief at the end of the year has the money left over that he was predicting, what happens then to the leftover money? Because as I understand, or understood him to say, that most of that leftover money was based on the fact that we had authorized new hires with spots he couldn't fill and therefore there was salary that wasn't spent and based on his crystal ball look towards the end of the year, he fully anticipated having that money available. So if we negate the need for the money, but the money's there anyway, what then happens to this surplus?
It just reverts back into the cash balance of the general fund. The budget itself, the budget authority goes away December 31 at midnight, so the cash, if you use a funding source of cash on hand and he has the budget left over, basically it does the same thing.
Well then, my follow-up question would be, what then have we accomplished by adding more money into the equation if there's money that should in fact be left over that would just jump into the new year and be used?
We would not have to do a supplemental appropriation if there is money left over because it would already be included in the 2014 budget. It really, it really doesn't. You could do it either way. You could either wait and see, see if there's, I mean, and honestly, I would rather go into the budget with the amount that is needed versus doing a supplement.
Correct.
Because if, if you take the chance that the police department has the $194,000 and they don't, then what are you going to do? If that's the philosophy going into it. So, it's easier to do it as part of this process.
Bonnie?
Well, I just wanted to say again, I think it's just being honest and upfront what our costs are to our citizens and that the chief did not take a stance that he was real comfortable he would have the money. He, at least my read was, he was going to try to scrape it together and I just don't think that's the way our safety officers should have to function. So I think we should fund it in 2014.
Okay, other. So, $195,000, okay. If we're going to identify the funding source, where would that come from? I'm just curious. Where would you recommend? Fire Department? That's kind of why, I think, my thought is, if we go through this and come up with what we need, then we can start talking about funding. I think that makes more sense. So we're okay, show of hands, we're going to fund the Dispatch Center? Anybody against them? Okay. $195,000. The 197/8 Compass, that is in the council contingency fund. I know there's been expression of several members of the council that they want to see some results out of that organization this year and they're willing to fund it through this year, excuse me, next year, but they want to see some results. I think that's a realistic expectation with, yes, Steve?
Thank you Chair. Well, you guys have heard me speak about this, so I think the last time we had it on the council, but I think we would be very irresponsible if we do not require or add some accountability and some financial impacts to the proposed projects that they're going to do in 2014. You guys heard me say it and I mean, I don't, the fact of the matter is, it will be successful when we can prove that it's successful. There isn't an argument, if at the end of 2014 we can point to their successes with definitive knowledge and data. And if we don't have that, then we're going to find ourselves in an argument and that particular effort will struggle on this council for years to come. I mean, an effort like this, and I worked as a Six Sigma Black Belt, financial impact for your projects is very common and that's basically what they do. They do these projects and they find savings, that's what Six Sigma projects, at least in what I did in the financial field, financial impact is primary to that project because that's what drives the cost benefit. Because if there isn't any great foreseen, forecasted benefit to the effort, then it's not worth taking up the audit or the exploration of improving the process. So, at the end of 2014, if we don't upfront, get some accountability, put into this Compass Committee, I'm telling you, it will, it will fail because we won't be able to point to its success, so that's my 10 cents.
Chad? Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's plenty of accountability. What I think the piece that keeps getting missed when we have this discussion over and over again is that the auditors are going to discover what they're going to discover. So the set of findings is going to be presented. They're not the authority to implement those recommendations. The efficiencies and the savings come in the implementation of the recommendations. So, you know, it's going to be a tool for us that we can encourage if whomever is in the mayor's chair at the time is not wanting to implement those recommendations, it'll give us some teeth to go ahead and figure out means that we can implement or enforce those from our end. It shouldn't be our job, but, you know, and I know the mayor has been supportive, he's looking forward to finding those efficiencies as well, but it does come within the implementation. So it's really an interesting partnership. I mean, we can go find everything wrong within the city, but if the changes aren't implemented, there's a problem. Part of the auditor's job too, as this gets rolling, recommendations have been made, the departments responsible for implementing a plan have done so, they also follow up and find out the result that that's producing. And so it's, it's a very full spectrum plan, we're just very early in the process, so keep those things in mind.
Steve?
And I just wanted, I wanted to not necessarily respond to that because I don't need to respond to it, but what you're saying Charity is, is right, but the reason you want financial impact tied to a project or an audit is so that you can identify, as the Compass Committee should, where they should put their efforts and their energy. If they look at a process that the city does today and it, in the end, if they, if it's fully implemented, absolutely, execution is everything. If it's fully implemented and it only saves the city $10,000, that's the forecasted impact of going down that road, is what I'm saying. Is it worth going down that road to spend four months on that particular audit that will elicit a forecasted financial impact of $10,000? My would say, no, it's not worth going down that road. So, assigning a forecasted financial impact to your audits helps you define and focus where your efforts are going to make the biggest difference for the taxpayer and save them money. And so if we, that's why I'm saying this financial impact is key because it helps them identify where they're going to be most successful for the taxpayer in saving this money and improving the processes. And it makes it easy to continue to fund them because they will be able to demonstrate their success. And so without doing that, we will never be able to say, without having financial impact involved, their efforts sometimes could be very wasted. They could go down the road of this audit and potentially spend four months doing an audit and have a financial impact of $5, $10,000 on the entire process that they just spent four months on. And I would say that that is a huge waste of taxpayer money.
That is something, my point was that that is something that they are keeping track of. We're just too early in the process to see the dollar amounts that we want to see, so...
I'm just saying, financial impact is something you do first. You don't assess financial impact after you've done your audit because, again, you will have spent four months doing something that now you've discovered has a financial impact of $10,000.
On the front end though, with a new division, learning how this machine works, I think you're going to see more of that later on in the process as the staff has a familiarity with how things work within the city, within this particular city. I understand what you're saying and there is a, there is a site for that. I think it's just because of the newness of it, you know, it's, once everything is up and rolling, you're going to see a lot more of that.
Yeah, no, and I'm just telling you, in Six Sigma, that effort that I worked in, we had financial impacts right away. We didn't, it didn't, we didn't take a year or two to, we had to have the finance officer of the company sign off on the financial impacts based on the things we were finding in those processes when we first started assessing those processes. So this is something that can be done right away. This isn't something that, where you got to have experience. I was a brand-new Six Sigma Black Belt and that was one of the things we had to have on every one of our projects in my first year of working in that effort. So, I'm just saying this is something that can be done and signed off by a finance officer of the city in the same manner. I'm just saying the finance officer of the city, but, I mean, it might be another designated individual that would assign a forecasted impact on that audit. And I'm just saying, that is extremely important because we'll be able to seeing their success by having that. Otherwise it becomes this argument again that we're going to have and it will happen whether we're here or not, as to whether that $200,000 that we're spending on that effort is eliciting some sort of benefit for the taxpayer.
Okay. Let's refocus because we're starting to have the Compass debate and that's not what I want to have here. But I think, it's well understood that if they aren't, if we don't see the results, they're going to go away, but I think we will see results, but Chad?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my biggest concern with this item is continuity. I've always been a pretty strong advocate for the Compass Committee in the past, but what I'm, my biggest concern right now is we're about to change head auditors again. Well, I, again, I guess for the second time in a second year and attracting someone into that position with the political nature that this has become and trying to be, you know, keep funding it, I mean, I don't know, I wouldn't take the job personally, but I mean, I don't know if we're doing ourselves a disservice in that, that point or doing someone coming into this job a disservice, but you know, they're never know if they're going to be funded from month, year to year. I don't know how that's going to work and I, that's kind of one of the things that give me a pause at this point. I don't, it's other than that, I don't, I mean, I hope it works, it's a new program, I was willing to give it a couple of years to try to, you know, get some results, but I don't, I mean, I don't know if I'll be here next year or not, but I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to get my point across is that I just don't know how easy it's going to attract a quality person into a job that may not be funded next year.
That's so, okay, so, thank you. Richie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just getting hooked up with the Compass Committee and I'm just learning a lot of the things that have been in motion and what's going to be changing to some of the directions here as well. And I just want to kind of re-address some of the things that have been brought up in the discussion and I welcome the discussion as well. What will help me out in bringing forwards, for example, you folks are using the word accountability, could you define that for me? I don't mean to do that right now, but could you give me what you mean by accountability? What means accountability for you may be something different for a different person. So, I just want to try to avoid moving targets and so accountability is one of those avenues that would help me out. The other part of it, and I'm not familiar with Black Belt, whatever it's called, accounting practices, they already have a standard practices that they have to comply with already in place. So, if there's a difference between the two, I would welcome that explanation of what that difference is. And the other point we need to work on and we're going to try to in the Compass Committee is on the turnaround time for the audits. If it is taking four months, I'm trying to figure out why it's taking four months, first of all. The, it should not take four months to do that, that audit. And if there is a lack of communications in some areas, and that usually winds up to be where my first interest is, is in helping the communications area, that will, that is another area that needs to be addressed. And I know that communication seems to be a weak point in working with Compass. The other part of it that has been brought forward is the financial impact. Again, that's a, to me, and this is just my opinion, is that it's an ambiguous term. So if I can have a definition of what a financial impact is, that'll help me out as well, so I can avoid these moving targets. That's primarily what I'm after. Thank you.
Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, being on the outside looking in, this Compass deal looks like they're treated like they're like two, three people that had an idea and they came to the city and said, "We'd like you to create us a job." And it's my understanding that this Compass Committee was created by the council. And the council created the Compass Committee and then these people applied for these jobs. Now, now, now we've got, you know, these expectations, I fully believe that there should be savings or accountability, there should be cost accounting of their time to the projects and it makes sense, but my God, wasn't this all laid out when this thing was, was their expectations? I mean, this is horrible. I'm embarrassed to be a part of a city that treats a committee like this. And then the exaggerations, I mean, when we got, well, you know, I champion this because they promised millions of dollars in savings. Well, who did? These employees didn't champion this deal, it wasn't their idea. I mean, we've got people who've probably feeding families in the middle of a hell of a mess and it's embarrassing, you know, and exaggeration doesn't help, you know? And if we thought that there was millions of dollars available that they should find that easy, why are we looking at the largest budget the city's ever had? Why, if it's that dang easy, let's cut it. And I, I really feel bad for these people because we've gotten personalities involved and not the principals. And that's all I'm going to say.
Well said. Anybody else? I, I've always looked with my two cents worth on the Compass Committee or the Compass staff in my career with the Army is... staff in my career with the Army as kind of our RG, or our budget office with the council. And I think they'll prove their worth, but we'll see. But another incentive for, unfortunately, Callan's leaving, a new person, I think, will say, "Hey, I got a producer, I'm, it's going away." Might be an incentive, but I'd just hope it doesn't. Right? Because I think it's got a lot of merit. Okay, it's in the budget, it's in council contingency, correct? All I need is approval from you to move it back over to authorize it funding? Do I have consensus? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All understand it, and those opposed, so it's done. Performing arts, let's, so we don't hit a brick wall saying, "We don't have the money, we've got to do supplemental," or is that what we should do? May I ask your comment on that? Because it's a mess, isn't it? So we just wait, wait? Okay. Performing arts is passe, we'll talk about it another time. Unless some, Charity?
I'm just trying to get up to speed on it.
Dancing plays, things like that?
We have-
May I say-
Situation where-
Maybe the mayor, let me try this, if I'm off or Bonnie. But basically, when the theater was built at the Dakota Middle School, the city put money into that through the 2012 Vision money. And we had an understanding that they were going to operate it and take care of it, and we were pretty much out of the picture. Is that correct? And there was supposed to be a memorandum of understanding-
Well, I would, yeah, that's what the memo of understanding says, but there-
And then they came back and said, no-
But the story, we went back and forth and all through the vision process. And so up until recently, they believed that, or people running it naively believed, instead of looking at the written document, that the city was going to help-
Supplement the operation.
Start them up, the operations started them up. But the mayor, we have a meeting in September, and they're going to come forward, and then I guess we'll just handle it at that time, if that's the way the mayor thinks it's the best. Make our decisions at that time. If that's how the mayor thinks should be handled.
Let's, let the mayor address this, because-
Well, first of all, I think that the cart is majorly before the horse by discussing budgets at the, for the performing arts right now. I mean, the, basically, where we're at on this is, two years ago, Performing Arts came to me, they had a, they had a concern with, or an issue with, with funding. And I reminded them of what the MOU said, that the city's responsibility was the $3.3 million, $250,000. And then the MOU puts the responsibility for the ongoing operations and maintenance on the Performing Arts Board and the, and the school district. We talked, I talked to some people in the private sector, and they were willing to step up and help fund Performing Arts directly, to help get them through the valley that they were experiencing, so that they could continue to do fundraising. And now we have a situation where, earlier this spring, they had come, and they said, "Well, what about getting in the, in the city budget?" And I said, "I am open to it. We currently have an MOU. I'm not promising that we would do it, but I'm open to it. We have an MOU that would have to be negotiated." Several months went by, and then, and then it came up again the other day, and now we're in a bit of a situation. So I, go ahead.
Didn't we go through this when we had about 50 different, maybe not 50, 30 different arts organizations? We formed the Allied Arts. Wouldn't this fall under that?
Thank you for reminding me of that, Charity. Yes, it would. And I've asked Pauline to, the other day, to provide the information to, to Performing Arts and how to get into the, the arts budget, which for next year is $102,000. So that budget received a 2% increase, and so that wouldn't be nearly enough to satisfy what Performing Arts is looking for. So they have a, they have a board. There's some question as to how often the board has been, has been meeting, that's being, being worked, worked through. And they have some new folks involved that are committed to trying to help them raise, raise the funds. And they now recognize what the MOU says, and the MOU is very clear what the expectations are. And before, they would come to the city council asking for money, they would, they would need to have, the MOU would have to be negotiated, it would have to come through the council, had to be approved by the council, you know? And I, and I told them, "Look," I said, "If, if it gets to the point where it looks like the Performing Arts isn't simply going to be able to go on without having funding, I'm sure that the council and I will step up to the plate and help out. But what that will create is, unless it's done the right way, it will create 10 to 15 years worth of bad will in the community." And we've gone through all that before with other organizations, and we don't want to go through that with them, because they stood up in front of the council and promised that the city wouldn't be asked for more money, at least at that time, beyond the $3 million, $250,000. So the meetings will be ongoing, and the discussions will be ongoing. But I really didn't want to burden the council with asking for money now, because I don't think it's fair to ask, fair for me or you to get a request for, for money right now, when the existing MOU is crystal clear, and that would need to be renegotiated first.
May I?
Steve, just, thank you, you chair. And I, I saw this item, and I, of course, we didn't hear much about it, except that I just heard in passing about the $212,000 that the Performing Arts was looking for, and I confused it with the Allied Arts Fund. But I, I don't know what this council's stomach is for $212,000 unplanned, and not, I just, especially since we're funding Allied Arts in the city at a tune of $102,000 already. I just honestly, I don't have a stomach for $212,000, not as a council member, but I just, I don't, I don't think that we have the ability to afford to do that, especially when, I would love to see $212,000 go towards streets before I would an additional Performing Arts group. So, thank you, Chair.
Welcome. Charity?
Just let me finish my thoughts. I think that if we're going to have this discussion, and having had the mayor put the budget together, the, I think the more appropriate place for it might be to look at that particular community investment, Allied Arts, and is that something we want to give more to? In the meanwhile, help Performing Arts get affiliated with that, so that they're under that umbrella. But I, I feel that funding them outright now or in the future is just going to work against the process we created with this Allied Arts. So.
Okay. So, fair to say that there is more discussion and development that has to occur between the office of the mayor and this group and some of us, before we even begin to discuss and consider what our options are, correct? Pauline?
Thank you. I just want two things. First, to clarify, I thought we had increased those community investment groups 2%, if I just looked, and they are still at the $100,000 for Allied Arts and the $100,000 for the Health and Humanities. That's my mistake. I thought that we had increased it. Second of all, Karen Gunderson Olson commented the other night, that they are currently working with the Performing Arts. So they're well aware of each other, I guess, at this point. I just need to make sure that the Performing Arts gets an application as part of the Allied Arts process.
Okay. Now, just to clarify, I'm not, I didn't want to-
I need to.
Go ahead.
So, Pauline, because I, I communicated to the council, and I included it in my budget presentation, and it was my intent to add the $2,000 for each, how do we, how do we, that-
That's added.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Council, you okay with that? They're okay with it? Pauline? They're okay with it?
Yeah, that's what I presented.
I asked them to cover it.
Okay. It's all right.
I'll look back to my official office.
We're talking about $4,000.
Pardon? Any objection?
I have a mayor's question.
Okay. Come on, we're, we're in the, go ahead, Brad.
Like, it's probably not the right time, but, but there were two, you have $102,000 for Allied Arts, and then what was it, Health and Humanities? And who are the, what, could you help me with that group? Is that okay? Wait, oh, okay.
WAVE does not get money out of there, because they're line item through the police department now. But we look at Boys Club, YFS, we look at the community health, the senior centers, those types of-
It's an argumentative way.
Correct. And there's an internal city committee that does recommendations on that, which Renee Parker from United Way is part of, as is Barb Garcia with Community Development.
Okay. Did you have a comment on this issue, Richie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to add a couple of cents' worth in this whole conversation is that the mayor invited me into one of those conversations, and I had to do a lot of history and background checking on it. And what the mayor's proposing here is the direction we need to go. And one of the things that probably Karen Gunderson Olson will be able to help them out is their lack of experience for the PACRC, Performing Arts Center, Rapid City. If they get a little bit more experience and get a little bit farther along on the learning curve, that'll help them out, too, especially on the post-PR that's going to be needing for them, because everyone here is correct about the comments that there ill will be going on if they don't get the governance package put together. And that's what they're seriously lacking, is their, that whole venue, and they're just short on experience on that.
Okay. I didn't mean to bring this can of worms up, other than I thought we all should be aware of it. I think it's only fair, it's, okay. Bonnie?
I was just going to clarify, in case you don't know, the Performing Arts Center is the New Dakota Theaters, the two theaters there.
New Theater.
And so anyway, there's a whole comedy of errors involved, but we'll be getting more updates probably in September.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the Journey Museum. There was a $35,000 request for additional, this is basically upgrade of their digital software, that kind of stuff, yes? Is there-
Yeah, you're right.
Do we need to beat this to death, or are we for it?
Yep. If you need some more information on what they're looking for, we can offer us a little bit. Go ahead.
Richie, I've heard a couple of different things. First, I heard it was for building maintenance, then I heard it was for security, now I'm hearing it's for, what, a sound system?
Yeah, could, yeah, let me address part of that.
Can you elaborate, please?
Probably perhaps some of the rationale for behind that confusion is because the new Journey Museum director came on board and saw a different direction that we needed to go from the previous executive director. So that's perhaps some of the confusion. And then what we're trying to nail it down to is on the security risk management portion of it, because the alarm system over there is very inadequate. The other part of it has to do with the people, the public having access to the information that is at the Journey Museum is on its last breath, is, is on life support, and is barely able to make it. So if there's some confusion on that part of it, it's primarily because of the changing of the guard over there.
John, do you want to comment?
Yes, please. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
If this thing will ever come on. You know, I find this very interesting, because, you know, I had the same conversation with the chief that Mr. Laurenti had about more fundraising through the Humane Society. Well, that's been an ongoing theme with this council for the last few years that I've been here with the Journey. And I know last year, we added another $66,000 through CPI to the Journey to put them over $400,000. So, you know, now we're looking at doing this, or CIP, I mean, CIP, I mean, sorry. So, you know, I mean, get my, but one thing we've been talking about for the last couple of years is making the Journey be more self-sufficient. And I think we have to. We have to hold, and no offense, Richie, I have nothing against the Journey. I just have this, I know a lot of my people that I talk to, and I talk to, there's been quite a discussion since the Humane Society got cut. And now with the Journey getting added $35,000, you know, that's roughly a 12 and 1/2% increase in their budget. I mean, that's absolutely, in my opinion, ridiculous when we're cutting the Humane Society 10%. Thank you.
Okay, John. Chad?
I can't believe I'm about to do this, but I agree with John.
It's okay to agree once in a while, you know, you don't have to fight all the time.
The point is very well made, and I'm a member of the Journey, I've been very supportive of the Journey, and I will continue to support the Journey. However, we're, you know, we're cutting the Humane Society, which I consider to be vital, and you can argue that all day long. But I think it's important that we, you know, we take care of the animals, and we, you know, we make sure that the city's safe and clean and everything else. And I don't, like I said, we could argue the merits of that all day long, but I don't like, then they go out and they raise $750,000 on their own. And then we come to the Journey, which I consider a vital asset, and I support them 100%, but to give them extra $35,000, I just, I, boy, I don't know. I just, I'm having a hard, hard time stomaching that one. So that's just my impression.
Bill?
I, I agree with what's been said here, and I have to go back to what we heard last year, when Chuck Parkinson stood before us, and he said, "We have the biggest, the largest Sioux Indian artifact collection in the world, in the Journey Museum. And unfortunately, most of it is in the attic in boxes." And they went further and said that it was the city's doing that each of the four collections is displayed equally. And I think that having the largest collection of Native American artifacts in the world could cause the Journey to be a worldwide draw. There are people, you know, so many of us locals take things like that for granted, but there are people in other countries around the world, I think would, would make this a destination merely to see the largest collection of Sioux Indian artifacts in the world. And I'm hopeful that this new director will take it in a new direction to bring some of that out and mark it in that fashion, so that we see lines waiting to get in that facility. It's a quality facility with wonderful things to see, but you can't see it if it's in storage in boxes. And I think we need to take a new direction that would cause it to be, to allow it to generate more revenue and be more self-sustaining. And I think that's one of the things we've heard around the table, is that we'd like to see some effort on the part of the Journey to become more self-sustaining. Thank you.
Pauline, Richie, Blacks, we'll get you. I'm going to get, I want Pauline to have a question, a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stepping back just a second, we talked about Performing Arts and the MOU we have with them, which was to provide the capital for the project, but not operational costs. And if we're going to give them operational costs, the discussion is to have a new MOU. Well, we now have an MOU with the Journey Museum as well. That MOU says we will pay for the maintenance, utilities, insurance for the building, and a management fee. If you, and I have nothing against the Journey, but if you provide this additional funding for a surveillance system that's outside the MOU, as it currently reads today.
Good point.
If it were a card system to get into the building, security-wise, sure, that would fall under it, because that would be securing the building. We paid for part of that for the doll. But that's not what is currently covered under the MOU that we have with them today.
Thank you. Richie?
I've got it for you, Richie. It's hard for my red eyes to see red.
Let me address a few of the points here that has been brought up. The $35,000 for the CIP hasn't been spent yet. We have, we have parking lot maintenance, the issues that water's coming up out of the ground, and that whole thing needs to be studied a little bit more in depth. But anyway, that, that money has not been spent. And I'm trying to remember, we've got one other item that has not been spent yet either on the CIP, caulking of the building, and that's scheduled. That has to be done. So that money has not been utilized yet. They, and I won't go into the MOU, Pauline did an excellent job explaining that. The SIMS is the Sioux Indian Museum, so if I use that acronym a little bit too much here, I apologize. But anyway, the SIMS has also gone through a director change over there as well. They, we just hired a new director over there, probably in the neighborhood of six months ago. of six months ago. And that is not out of our control. We don't have any control as who that director is. We don't have any control over what exhibits can be displayed. It is up to the federal government in that case, and that is under the Department of Interior. Those people have that, that control. And there is, again, that director handles two other museums besides this one. So, he's taking that project on, and you will be seeing, I'm sure you will be seeing, in fact, one day I was over there within the last month, and he was changing out some of those exhibits. Primarily why, it is stored up in that loft in the back, and that's also a very secure area. Nobody's allowed to get up in there. There's a reason for that. But anyway, those items are rotated out now with that new director. And that, those items will also be taken to the other, if I understand it correctly, and I may be wrong in this part of it, but the, that director is also involved in Billings and Oklahoma. So, he has to rotate artifacts in those two areas over there. The worldwide draw you mentioned is, has to do with our buses coming in. We're getting lots of buses. In fact, one day over there, we, which is like in the neighborhood of 30 to 50 passengers coming in, we have a calendar full of buses coming in. So, you'll probably see buses, like, the maximum we can hold is seven buses at a time. So, you'll probably see that coming up, what we call the shoulder season. So, that, stay tuned for that, that is coming. The marketing program, this new director is handling that, she has got a committee to put together. And you probably know Johnny Brockelsby from the Reptile Gardens, he's also heavily involved in that. He's going to be helping us out in that area. Again, it's a new, new group that just got put together under this new director, who's only been in here nine weeks. The other thing that keeps cropping up is that the museum should be self-sufficient. There is no museum that's selfish. None.
All right. I think we've had enough on this one. Just been, Bonnie? Yes? Am I? I was gonna call a question, but go ahead.
Well, Richie is correct that no museum is self-sufficient. And, but besides that, this $35,000 to $55,000 from the Journey Museum is, I think is going to be brought forward to us in September. So, it'd be more looking at being funded this year, as opposed to putting it into the 2014 budget. And I think instead of us speculating on what the, what the needs are, I know that they're crippling along on some issues, but I think we can just wait and see what they have to say in September, and make your decision at that time.
At this time, for the budget of 2014, can I have a show of hands that support putting the $35,000 into the Journey budget for this system? Do I see a show of hands?
No, 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 with 2014, no. That's, that's, we have to wait till the September 10th? Anyway, it's sometime in September, when we...
Then why's it on the budget agenda?
It was passed there, because I wasn't sure if they needed the money in 2013 or 2014, so.
So, we're gonna have this discussion again in September?
Yes.
Boy. Is there anything else on this list? Is there anything else on this list that's not in the 2014 budget? If there isn't, so the, the Journey Museum is no, not now, is not in the 2014 budget, that $35,000, period. We're gonna take a break, a break out of, not break, but a break in schedule. Jackie's here, let's discuss the issue on the newspaper. Are we going to supplement the budget for duplicate, that's what the mayor, where'd he go? Counsel, do you want to be funding double publication of your minutes? Bonnie?
Pauline, it seems like if we only publish the added minutes, that that would be less, but you sound like there's some kind of technical problem for you to divide those up.
I can't pick and choose.
No, I know you have to do, I'm just saying, though, you had said, "Well, then we need to put legal notices and all this stuff." So, that's why I'm trying to figure out if you, why it's hard to just give them the minutes, along with what you're already doing, and exclude the legal notices and other things that you give to the journal.
You, you could exclude all the other legal notices and just publish the minutes, but I would still need additional funding for that.
Right, but you had, so do you have any idea what that would be?
I would not, because I don't have the breakdown of my cost for just minutes only.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can help simplify this. I support publishing in both, in both newspapers. And going through the budgeting process with all the other needs that had been identified, and also knowing that Groton, and I didn't realize Groton had two newspapers, learn new things every day, but there's other cities across the state that have done RFPs, and as a result of doing RFPs, they've been able to reduce their publishing costs. I'm not aware that we have ever done an RFP for the publishing or minutes. That is the fairest way to do this, is to do an RFP first, recalibrate, see where we're at, and then, and then come back and, and look at it again then. It wouldn't, it won't take very long, it's already on, on Pauline's radar. Be a fairly simple RFP. We're already publishing at my request, a lot more in the Native Sun News than we ever had before. We're putting, starting a couple of years ago, we started putting job advertisements in. Recently, we're, we've been doing the comprehensive plan advertisements, because we want to encourage more native people to get involved in the comprehensive plan process. But with, without going through the process of an RFP, I think it would be premature to double the, the city's publishing costs, especially when I have, you know, 10 department heads to face who have other needs as, as well. So, that, that was my rationale for not doubling the publishing costs, and there should be an RFP coming forward shortly for the council's authorization.
So, you'd like to leave it where it is right now?
So, there's no need to increase the budget for publishing next year? Is that correct? For legal notices and minutes and that kind of stuff, at this time? For the questions?
Thank you, Chair. And I, I definitely support continuing what we're doing now, as the mayor said, and I had heard as well, that we were doing more with the Native Sun, and I think that's good. But I think we have to weigh, especially in an RFP process, I'm a little concerned there that, you know, one, the journal, their exposure to our citizens, I don't, I don't know what, you know, as far as audiences are concerned, but I think that's something that has to be taken into account in that RFP. I think the journal could probably get beat fairly handily on cost. It's just my guess, I don't know. Okay, so there we are. So, anyway, just food for thought when we...
But right now, the only question is, do we need to increase the budget for publishing legal notices? The answer is no. Okay. Swiftly handled, how's that? Next item I have on my list is stormwater drainage. It's my turn. Well, because of our lateness in getting the hearings and so forth organized to get this utility ordinance to the public and to the council for final approval, we will not be able to put a assessment, if that's the right word for it, into the collection next year through the county collection system. It's going to be collected as a utility fee, not as a property tax. It's a fee. And as legal, as a definition, it's dollars and dollars, I'm not gonna argue that, but it's a fee, so the money can be carried forward. But it's imperative, I think, that we get started. And Terry would like to see a commitment from the council to authorize funding for next year. Fully understanding, and I understand, he understands, that if we vote, don't vote this in, or if it somehow meets a demise and it's not funded through the assessment or the drainage fee process, that will have to probably go away. But it's a start. And we need maintenance. I know this year, we saw the need in a lot of places, a lot of areas, and it's one way to start. And I was talking to him today, he said, "Oh, we could start with less." That's always a nice gesture in ways, but I said, "You know, if, if we begin the process next year, we begin collecting money in, in 2015, the two things are going to happen. Number one, we should be preparing to put projects out there that make sense, and they're gonna prepare this community for future high water and floodwater. And also, I think, in my opinion, need to address these areas that have been hit with the FEMA flood map. If there's something we can do, let's get it. It's gonna take a lot of planning, a lot of engineering, and so forth to get it going. So, next year, we could start some maintenance, and some could be contracted out, some could be with a small crew." So, source of funding, I guess we could talk about, because Terry's not here. Charity?
I think the, the bigger question is, this is a cart before the horse thing, as far as the budget goes, at least in, in my assessment, because this would have to go through the SAB or the Utility Support Committee, correct? It should.
If you're gonna borrow the money from there, that's true, I guess, but go ahead.
Do we have any other ideas on funding sources for $750,000?
Brad has this.
Brad? No, but if we, Pauline, if we had... It's, it's hard to say that without having that discussion committee, but let's say that we, we kind of knew that it would go through that committee process. Would we need to somehow account for that in the budget now, or would that come through as a supplemental, because we're trying to get away from that practice, so that everything's more transparent? How would we, how would we do that?
Well...
For the purposes of this discussion?
For the purposes of this discussion, I think if that's truly the funding source that they're looking at, it should go through the committee first, because not only do they have to make the recommendation, we have to talk about terms. What's the interest rate? What's the repayment schedule? What happens if the utility doesn't come to existence? Are we, are we willing to not have that money paid back? There's so many other things, I think, that needs to be discussed before we just say, "We're gonna do it."
Doesn't it have to be paid back by statute?
It's, it's just been our policy. That's what that fund is for, is for special assessment by, you know, projects where the money gets repaid.
And then Jerry, you know, if we're looking at doing something like that, why would we not look at using the same concept towards the $800,000 we already collected, if it, just to borrow it to get things going, rather than SAB?
Unfortunately, I'm not the Public Works Director, and I haven't put that together, and I wish that you would have been here to answer those questions, but we've discussed it. But before I comment further, Amanda?
Thank you, Chair. If, I'm just going on my memory, because Terry Wolster-Dorf is not here, but I believe that one of the problems with trying to utilize that money that's in those district funds or whatever, is that they are specified for capital outlay, not maintenance and repair. They're not? They're not specified for that?
It's for the capital outlay and maintenance of the drainage facilities. The problem is, like Jerry had said earlier, is that we are collecting those per basin. We're supposed to be keeping track of them per basin. Up until like a year and a half ago, it was not being tracked per basin. So, now we are tracking it as far as what basin is collecting what fee, but we have about $600,000 that we don't know what basin it belongs to. So, we need to figure out a way to segregate that.
Thank you for that explanation. And then, while I've got the mic, just, one of the things that I was talking to Jerry about this is, is bringing forth, because we're gonna go out for public hearings, on the drainage utility fee. One of the things that I was bringing up is, is that what we've been presented with so far is an estimate of $1 million for M&amp;R and $3 million for capital outlay. My question is, is, is number one, how much do we actually really need for M&amp;R, maintenance and repair, cleaning out the drainage? So, my recommendation was to put something into the 2014 budget, to go out, economic development and get money out into the public, hire out someone to start cleaning out some of these drains, so that we can actually find out what a dollar gets us for the city. I think that's just valuable information, as well as cleaning out some of the drainage problems that we have, and getting some of that maintenance and repair. The only concern I have with this $750,000 is, I think this is a little too much to put into the 2014 budget. I would rather look at, you know, maybe like $500,000 or $200,000, I mean, just to get it started. Well, it's just discussion, so, but, thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
When we were putting together the, the budget, Terry and I discussed the, I think it's $800,000 that is currently sitting there, because it was collected over the years and not identified by Drainage Basin. And so, thanks to a state law change, we are now able to use that money as part of the utility. And I, I asked, you know, could we just create the utility and put this entire amount in it, and then spend it for next year? And Terry's recommendation was against, was against that, and I agree with his rationale. I can try to repeat it here, but it might be better for you to hear it from, from him. But, but I think it makes more sense, based on his recommendation, to go, to go through the hearings, see where we end up with the utility, before we do that. You know, if you take $750,000, you know, if you, you could either do it from that fund, or you'd have to find another funding source. Hopefully, it wouldn't be general funds, I, I wouldn't agree, I wouldn't agree with doing that, although you could look at SAB 28 or leftover vision funds. I don't know if there's going to be much left over, we'll see what comes at the end of the year. But I think we need to get, to get through these, these hearings, make the case to the community on what this is going to look like. There's going to be a lot of discussion, there's already a lot of concern out there as to what this, what the details of this ordinance is, and I think that we need to, to do that before we add 3/4 of a million dollars into the, into the budget.
I appreciate that, Mayor, that was the road I was gonna go down, but I appreciated all the woman Doyle's comments as well. I feel like us talking about this now kind of puts the cart before the horse, especially since we want to make sure that the utility is successful, because I support that. And I believe we need to go through that process so that the necessary hearings are had, that due diligence, due diligence is done, before we try to find $750,000. We've got $800,000 sitting in that utility. That was the whole point of creating the utility, was to free up those basin funds, so that they could be used as one large superfund, if you will. And so, for us to get ahead of that and say, "Well, let's try to find $750,000," even though we know in a number of months, we're gonna create a utility that will free up $800,000. And I just want to remind my colleagues here that, and I think all of us probably spoke with Terry a little bit about, had those individual meetings on this utility, as it's going to be coming up, even, and I had asked the question in that meeting, that even if we exempted single-family dwellings from that fee on the property taxes, it would still generate $2.4 million annually. So, I'm just saying, if, we need to be very careful before we try to spend seven, 3/4 of a million dollars of the taxpayers' money, where this utility is going to free up $800,000, and we want, hopefully, the majority of the citizens to buy into this utility, which is, like I said, at a minimum, gonna generate at least $2.4 million and upwards of over $4 million in fees. And so, just food for thought.
Would you like to address, Mr. Chair, the reason, or the, put in a nutshell, because I can't do it sick, the circle we went around in on why we didn't want to expend those funds?
The $800,000?
Yeah, because it was collected under...
The main reason that, that they don't want to do it, and actually, the ordinance has proposed that you, I think you have copies of the proposed ordinance, or you should have, or have seen it, is that those were collected for basin infrastructure improvements, and paid for by developers in those areas. And the feeling is, that's where the money was intended for, that's where it should be spent, and that's been the intent pretty much all along by that committee. We debated all this in January through May. And the intent is to, to put that back into the infrastructure in the basin, or if someone is to come in, that's done a basin improvement, and can document that through the process that Public Works would require, they could get a reimbursement. Is that a good explanation?
That was beautiful, so my original...
Anybody not understand that, because... Anybody not understand that because I sometimes wonder if we're clear on that, but that is where that 800,000 was for. Now, I can tell you back years ago, that some of that was spent to do basin studies. And there's 23 or 24 of them are done, and those were paid for by that money. And that's the, the information we're using.
Basin studies with recommendations, we have yet to fund the implementation thereof.
Yeah, which would do to fund the, although some implementation has occurred, but yes, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if, if we wait for the hearings and try to put together this utility, is that, and we're talking about that, and then, so we're a year away from collecting tax on that utility if it passes correctly?
Fee.
And then how long are we before we can start spending money from that utility? I mean, how far, I guess what I'm thinking is, I, I guess when we look at 300, 400 homes get backed up into FEMA and, and of course, we had these people come to Public Works yesterday and, and it very well could have been a private easement and it might not be a city issue, but I think people are expecting us to do, we've got 20-some drainage basins and some of them are just plugged up because of trees and grubbing and stuff. And I, I would just like to see if we find 250, 300 grand to do a pilot program so we got an idea what it costs to just do the, the logging, the grubbing, the cleaning, uh, just clearing these things out. I mean, I, I mean, unfortunately, I have not experienced flooding, uh, but, but man, when you talk to people that, I mean, they're discouraged and I think they're looking at us to, to at least get started and do something. And, and even if we're not building new stuff, just start getting the stuff that we have cleaned up because I, I don't think people, we couldn't even hire an engineer to go survey some of these because they're so overgrown with trees and stuff. I, I, I just think, I think we could, I don't think we're getting the cart in front of the horse by just cleaning out the stuff we have.
We're absolutely not getting the cart by the, if, if we were to spend 750,000 next year cleaning out some of these disasters that we have on Hall Street, Knollwood, uh, over here on, some of them Texas and the other places, it'd be money well spent. But the intent is, and let me just give you a little experience of having put the solid waste landfill collection lot together, it takes time to get a utility this size together. And, and in our discussions, that my discussion with Terry is, this is kind of some money to kinda begin that process. For instance, we will start, as I understand, and I'm not sure exactly how this fee would be levied, whether it be collected, you know, half at a time, you know, like we do property taxes and we get half in April and half in October, however that works, or if it be lump sum, I don't know. But if we were to get some money, say in the first half of 2015, we should be in a position to start spending it. We need to be ready for it. He's not thinking about cranking up 100%, but if we're gonna be programming and planning the next year, we need to be ready for it. I'm gonna go to John first, because he's, I'm gonna use the protocol we do at council. If someone hasn't spoken on an issue, I'm gonna go to them first. John?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I can understand your concerns, Brad, but I think that Charity hit it on the head when she was saying getting the cart before the horse. One of the things, one of the things that, that I would worry about is, you know, we're not even starting through the process yet. You know, once we get through the process, once this utility is passed, we've got a lot of options then. Then we can look at SAB, or SAB 28 or S whatever. I said it right, I can't believe it. But, you know, we have a lot of options then. Now, you know, what is the option now? The only option now is general fund or undesignated cash. How much undesignated cash do we have, Pauline? Yeah? So, you know, and I hate to say this, but, you know, I'm kinda worried that this is a ploy just to take the CPI, you know, no offense Jerry, but, you know, I mean, I think that we need to, I think that we need to at least get, you know, get this down the path where the people can look at it, where it can get passed and then go from there. Thank you.
Actually, to, to answer that question, when I went through my little formulation, I deducted it out, so it's not, not my theory part of a CPI justification because in my discussion with Terry, I'm, I'm with him, confident that funding is available somewhere. And I see a lot of shaking heads, but...
Can I?
Yes.
Even there is funding, but, you know, Jerry, one thing is, what if it doesn't pass? What if it doesn't pass? What if we borrow money now from SAB 28 and it doesn't pass? How do we pay that back?
Earlier said that if we were to take the 750,000, hopefully without an obligation, and this thing fails and if we still spend it and clearing out some of our floodways in this community, that is not money wasted. That's why I'd want...
I don't disagree with you there Jerry, I don't disagree at all, but that's something that should've came into the budget beforehand. That's not something that should've came out here. That's something that should've came through Terry's budget, the 750,000 for this beforehand.
Would've made my job a lot easier tonight, that's for sure.
Let me clarify the cart before the horse comment. Because that was in reference to the SAB 28 or the Utility Support Process. That's why I asked the question, if we're considering that process, why could we not consider just borrowing from the 800,000? Because that's what it's been dedicated to, get the process moving. There's, there's still drainage funds, so we're not taking from something, using it for something else with potentially the inability to pay it back. And I still haven't heard an answer to that question, so...
I can, I don't think legally at this time we can, because as Mayor Quaker pointed out, state statute was just changed that if we collected money as part of a drainage basin fee prior to getting a drainage utility, that money can be transferred into the Drainage Utility Fund. So until we have a Drainage Utility Fund, we can't use it overall.
But we, but it already has been stated and discussed through committee that it could be used, it, it's designated for drainage issues, utility or not. That's what the money was collected for. Why could we not start to put it to use?
If you can tell me which drainage basins they are applied to, we could do that.
So retroactively, we're never gonna be able to figure that out, so we're just gonna have that money sit there forever?
They were talking at one time, trying to figure out a way to allocate it out. As far as I know, they never came up with a, a way to do that.
It's in the ordinance. Yes, it is in the ordinance, how to dispense that, I don't have it right here, but I can get it.
We went to legislature last legislative session and if you create a drainage utility, there is now a mechanism in state law to take the money collected from the previous drainage fund and, and move it over essentially into, and then it would be able to be used for any purposes under the drainage fund.
And that was understood by the committee, thank you.
The point is, we have a lot of people suffering in the city with drainage-related issues. It is the city's responsibility to maintain them and we have not for decades. I don't wanna see another year go by where we've done nothing because we're, we're trying to implement something. I think we need to think about it, we, we have some resources we can use.
The intent of the committee and the ordinance was to ultimately, that 800,000, give or take, would be going back into basin improvements as intended or reimbursement to developers that comply or construct facilities that are part of basin improvements. Ultimately, that was their intent, but certainly, the law allows us to do it, but the intent of that committee was to be, to honor a commitment that was made over the last 23 years. But there's nothing saying we couldn't borrow it. And I'm with you, we've neglected this for 70 years, 60 years, God knows how long. But Sam, or excuse me, Mayor?
Here were the two options that were, that I understood during the, the budget formulation process. One is, is we could create an ordinance, pass, pass an ordinance right now with, with no fee and create a utility and simply move the 800,000 into it and start spending it now. And, and we talked about, Terry and I talked about that when we were putting the budget together. The other option is, which was his recommendation, and I agree, uh, and, and that is, is to create the utility and then supplement in the 800,000 in and spend it. So then you'd have the 800,000 would come in next year and then the, the fee would be, would, would be in the process of being collected for the following year, so you'd be able to at least get started. So, just, does that help? Okay.
Is that what I said? That's kinda what I said.
Well, what, what I heard in the discussion is, is that we were kicking the can down the road for a year and that's not what, and that's not what Terry's intent was, is with his recommendation.
No, my intent is not to kick the can down the road, my intent is to get a authorization to proceed next year with 750,000.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No can kicking there, but Bonnie.
I, um...
Thank you, Sam.
I kinda see this really as a morality issue and that we have known that we have these problems and we keep waiting and waiting and waiting. And we're gonna set up a utility fee, but there's people, um, that may decide not to go that route and so, next year's budget will still have no money in it. And, you know, we're, we're a city that went through a huge flood and for us to have ignored these problems for so long, you know, really, it's shame on us. And I would support putting 300, 500,000 to this year's, for 2014 budget. And the other thing, one of my colleagues said was that it was too late to put things in the budget. Right now, this budget belongs to the council. We can do what we want to do with the budget. We could cut it in half, we could double it.
You can, but good luck.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, don't be thinking that we can't do anything to the budget. It's our prerogative, that's why we have it now, is for us to decide to bring our, our citizenship, because that's what, you know, we're here for, from citizens representing citizens' viewpoints, to bring that viewpoint to this budget. And I just, um, I don't know, I think it's kind of a trust issue because it's like, if I felt confident that this utility fee would be put in place, then I would be more willing to kick it, kick it down another year, but I don't really have that much confidence that it'll be passed, so...
I'd be very disappointed if it isn't, but Steve?
And I would be very, thank you Chair, and I would be very disappointed as well and just to echo some of Bonnie's words, and Bonnie, I, I appreciate that because it puts the onus on this council to make sure that our people, our constituents, understand this utility and they understand our support and they, they clearly understand the reasons behind it. And that depends on how we communicate it to them, wherever we go and at our council meetings. And I think it's important that the onus is on us to get that utility passed and created this next year so that we can start addressing these issues with that 800,000 that will be in there. This year, not 2014, this year, 2013.
Other questions, comments? Let me explain the 750,000, that wasn't something plucked out of the air, just so you kinda, I sat down with a friend and also we went over with Terry and we figured out what it would take to have a meaningful operation in the year to include, I think it was five or six, I, I'm gonna call them operators, field people out there, chainsaws, backhoes, trucks, whatever, cleaning the stuff out with a supervisor, some contract work out for clearing and grubbing, some minor contract work out for head walls, pipe and that kinda stuff and equipment. That's where that money came from. So it's not a, with 500,000, 500,000 is 500,000 more than we're spending right now. So if that's the, if the council would, huh? I'm looking down at the bank right now, tell me where I get, or the mayor, where we get 500,000? We have a lot of cash. We have a lot of cash. I mean, we, I've looked at this 15 million or 12, 3 million more than we had last year. We can't come up with 500,000 to help our people get out of the mud, for God's sakes? Okay, I'm, I know, but I'm just gonna, starting to get my gray hair up, but, if you don't mind.
Here's my thought, if you, either way, it should probably go to a committee, but beings right now, we do improvements for...
This is a committee.
Well, whether it's SAB 28 Utility Support Fund, CIP Committee. Right now, we pay for drainage improvements through the CIP Committee.
This is not capital outlay, CIP has no place for CIP, it's, this is not capital outlay, this is O and M.
At all.
This is O and M. It's O and M.
That can't come out of CIP.
We can rent it, we contract it, I don't, this is an O and M thing. Sell our buses or, I don't know. Mayor, go ahead. You're done? You don't wanna get my gray hair up? I think we take a smoke break for about 10 minutes and we'll come back. Inaction. If you're not getting a chance to speak, I'm either not seeing you raise your hand, so you need to be a little more expressive. We're going to start, okay, Humane Society. Well, my eyes are open and my ears are open, but if I don't see or hear from you, it's irresponsible, you make sure I do. So, we left the drainage issue unsolved. Okay, I would like to see us... I think that we ought to take the money out of the money that's been set aside, the eight hundred thousand dollars, whatever, and fund the seven hundred and fifty and move on. Yes, we can, if we set up the utility, we can.
Do what? The ordinance and the rate schedule would be passed separately. So theoretically, the ordinance establishing it could be passed and set up. I said the ordinance and the rate schedule can be passed separately.
They can, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill?
Didn't we say somewhere in the discussion, the ordinance would be an ordinance, and the rate schedule would be a resolution?
That's right, that's what it's written.
So, in that respect, they'd be separate, anyway, okay, thank you.
And it is also a separate ordinance on the dispersment ultimately of the eight hundred thousand, but yes. That's a source of funding, and let's move on. We're going to show some leadership to our community, let's get this drainage mess straightened out. Brad, do you have something to say?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm hearing. So we're all in agreement that we're going to pass an ordinance with no rate, that as soon as possible, to put that eight hundred thousand in, so we can get started right now on clearing and grubbing drainage. And then we will hold public hearings to put a, in September, to try to do a, to fix the rates to attach to it. So we're all agreeing to somewhat kill, kill a couple horses with the cart, but I'm in favor of that.
Our poor attorney, but I can't see him, but I, I can hear the air shaking, like...
What's the attorney have to say about that?
Joel? Maybe we need to straighten this out a little bit, we, we have a source of funding, Joel?
You know, I'm not, know that I'm really prepared to talk about it, I don't know that anything would prevent you from, from looking at starting the utility, but, you know, the whole point that delayed the start of the utility was that you wanted to have public hearings and input. Once you create the utility, you may be able to tweak what the rates are a little bit, but at some point, rates are going to be imposed, because you're going to now have to fund it somehow. And my understanding of the whole point of having the public hearings was to get input on creation of the entire utility. But legally, I don't know that it's, anything would prevent you from trying to fund it this year. I mean, I, I totally understand that there's drainage needs that need to be met, and, and that would be one way to do it. You know, from the, as far as the money that you have already, we do have the dilemma of the fact that it was collected from certain drainage areas, and that it cannot be expended except in those areas, and at this point, we can't really divide it out. And even if we could, there probably isn't enough to do a lot of major projects in any single drainage area. But creation of the drainage utility solves that problem, but you have to create the drainage utility before you can access that money.
Well, here's a suggestion, under the, one of the utilities, at least, the street department used to have a line item forty-three eighty-two or something like that for utility maintenance or something like that. Could we put it into a budget under a line item, and then we're not technically setting up a utility yet? Would that be a proper way to do it? Finance, could we put a, put a supplement into a line item within a budget that would do this? In other words, under the street or utility maintenance? And we, line item forty-three eighty-two or something like that, with this money, that it would be spent in utility drainage, excuse me, STORMS, drainage maintenance? Don't do that. Well, we're going to borrow it, or steal it.
You would still need to have, identify the funding source, and if it's a line item within another cost center, that's not helping you any, in any way, shape, or form.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I would rather, if you didn't, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, just a quick question. If we set up this, this utility, if we pass this ordinance, and then we go in and start talking to the citizens about rates, and the citizens are just up in arms over this, they can still repeal it, couldn't they?
I mean, sure, once you adopt the ordinance, an ordinance can be referred or after it's adopted, so.
Let me ask you another question. If we were to wait until September and October, and get all this passed, we could pass a supplement to the 2014 budget doing this?
You know, if you get the ordinance passed, the way I would view it, and I know Terry may have some different opinions because of the commitments that were made to landowners who've paid the fees, but you're going to, at that point, have access to the money that is sitting in the drainage fund. Hopefully, that would be enough to get the drainage utility up and running. You're not going to really get any fees until the end of 2014, 2015. And hopefully, the money that you've already collected from the past will be able to get the, the utility up and running. And then the fees you collect into the future will start paying for those projects, and then the ongoing maintenance. And hopefully, those landowners that have already paid in will just be happy that they're finally seeing money spent on drainage improvements, with the understanding that these capital improvements that are part of the plan are starting to get built, and there's a plan for starting to get those constructed, even if it isn't specifically with the seven hundred thousand dollars that's already been collected.
Go ahead, Amanda, and then we'll let the mayor speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Pauline, I believe if the fee schedule is going to be looked at to be placed as an assessment or a fee, but assessed on the property tax rolls, that has to be finalized or sent to the county by October first in order to apply for the 2014 year, correct?
That is correct, that's why the indication is that we would not receive any money on the assessment of this utility until 2015 at this point.
I just wanted to make that clarifying point, because when we're talking about funding for 2014, and talking about trying to get a utility up and running in 2014, it's really not going to happen after these public hearings until the 2015 tax year. So just wanted to clarify that, while we're talking about trying to get some maintenance and repair, and some clean out, and some, some cleaning out of the drainage, thank you.
That's kind of going, what I was getting at, is that the seven hundred and fifty would be enough for maintenance and getting some crews and starting to do some of the maintenance work. Wouldn't be enough for any capital improvements, and that wouldn't happen until 2015, when the revenue starts coming in.
Correct.
Right, I mean, and there may, honestly, at the end of the year, there may be a difference in how much money is in that, that available pot, and how much you want to budget for next year. And you would obviously have to find a different source of revenue to pay for that.
How much money, Pauline, is there, there is some money for drainage, it's about, it isn't very much compared to what we need.
CIP?
There's some in CIP, and then there's some in...
At the end of July, there is eight hundred and thirteen thousand roughly in the fund.
But there's some allocated, that Terry included in the, in the budget for next year. While you're looking that up, I'll, I'll say this.
Maybe that's not accurate, but...
Is, is that, I would rather, I mean, ultimately, you're the, you're the council, and if you guys want to, if you guys want to make a, I really, I think this is a great discussion, because what I'm hearing is, is that there's unanimous support for doing something with, with drainage, and that's going to make, that's going to make the sell of the ordinance a whole lot easier. I went through the impact fee debate. I went through, I went through that nine, 10 years ago, whenever, whenever that was. And, and it was, and we have a responsibility in order, I think, in order for, for this ordinance to be successful, is to earn community support, and that means you need to have buy-in from the businesses that are going to be affected by this. You need to have buy-in from, from the development community, you're going to need to have buy-in from, from churches, who are going to have to face fees that they've never had to face before. And I think if we pass a, if we pass an ordinance that has all the wording of the ordinance, and then pass the resolution of the fees later, I think, I think we, we kill a couple of, of really nice horses, like Clydesdales or the Lappalooza, or whatever those are called, but... Yeah, so, but I, but I, but I think, but I do think, though, that, that in keeping with, with the theme of this excellent discussion, you have the authority right now, and I would support, I would support it, of taking seven hundred and fifty, look, because we're, we're looking at taking one point three million dollars out of, of possibly the SAB 28 fund for IFAS and paying it back as we go forward. What we, what we can do is, is we can tonight, start the ball rolling on taking five hundred or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from SAB 28, and, or we could even do it as a supplemental for, for twenty, for 2013. But I think that that would be much better than, than passing the ordinance that has all the wording in it that we promised to hold public hearings on, and then come back and, and, and try to amend it if there's problems in the hearings. and- and try to amend it if there's problems in the hearings. I think that that's gonna- that could potentially hurt our- our credibility with the community as we have that- as we have that discussion.
Mayor, if I- if I might, in the drainage fund currently, there's forty-five thousand dollars budgeted.
Okay.
But there's also forty-five thousand dollars budgeted in 2013, and they have not used a penny of that money for a couple of years. In addition, he has about three point five million in capital improvements for drainage between CIP and utility support.
Well, that's a cry- that's a crying shame. I know who to call on that, so. Forty-five thousand dollars should be spent.
You know, just so the record's clear, and my position on this is, I'm not trying to get the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart. I just have a very serious commitment to get this drainage issue that's been neglected for decades fixed and going, and if we can do it, let's do it. And I think we're not trying to mislead the people in any way. I mean, the people have been hit with this FEMA flood thing. That's tragic. And- and the people have had their windows busted out of their houses because of flooding. It's tragic. And the city has not done its job, and it's our- we have an opportunity to do something. And I'm just asking a legal way where we can fund next year with basically maintenance and repair and- and give our public works department the tools to begin the process in understanding that if the hearings do not go well, and for some reason or the ordinance and so forth does not fly, at least next year, we will have done something, and we will have done some work. And if we don't get past the ordinance and we're looking at just doing it, we'll- we'll get ahold of contractors and clear out and do some grubbing and some improvements, but I think we need to- we need to provide a little leadership. I'm willing to listen to how can we get that done. Richie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we're going on to the discussion, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit more confused, but the- the biggest thing that I was hearing out of the- early on, it seems to me we're starting to leave the intent of the task force behind because what they had the impression that they were given to me is that the eight hundred thousand was gonna be used for the startup of the utility or the drainage maintenance, including storm catch basins and everything else along with that. That's the intent that I heard that was coming forward. Terry was also gonna use that eight hundred thousand for the startup for next year to get- to get this thing off the ground. To me, the seven hundred and fifty thousand is brand new. I've not heard this number before tonight. So, if that- if that's what you're looking at doing, then you're adding to the project total of one point five million and some change.
Can I clarify something while you're asking the question? The eight hundred thousand dollars is the amount of money that's in the cash fund for drainage basin fees.
I understand that part.
The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a budget number-
I understand that part.
-that or whatever funding we had. They're not combined. It's one.
Yes, but your- your intent is leaving what the- what you're intending to do is leaving what the intention of what the task force was presenting to us.
The task force-
And then if you're gonna be changing the intent of that task force, they need to be notified as well.
The task force intent, because they debated this issue at great length, was ultimately in the ordinance reflexes or the proposed ordinance reflexes, is that the eight hundred thousand dollars that was paid for for drainage basin fees would ultimately be used for drainage basin improvements, or if someone could prove that they have contributed to basin improvements in accordance to our specifications, they would be eligible for appropriate reimbursements. That's right? That's the way it was. There's no intent whatsoever to- to go around what that intent was. I think if we were to take this money out of that eight hundred thousand, we're probably gonna end up paying some- paying it back to a basin fee- basin development.
So, what I'm hea-
I'm sorry.
So, what I'm hearing you say is there- the- the task force is in agreement with this?
What I'm saying is-
Because I understood it, that they did not- they were not aware of the- the specific basins, what this money was allocated for. My understanding was, they did not know that.
And as- as Pauline has said, there is no records up until about a year and a half ago or two years ago that reflects where this money came from or what basins or what it was for. That is correct.
Right.
But the intent of the committee, and it's in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, was that since it was collected as a basin improvement fee, ideally, that money would be spent on capital outlay and basin improvements. And that's okay, but we need some money to start with.
And I'm- and I'm very okay with that, but that- that eight hundred thousand, I understood that to be what was gonna be the startup. And Terry was gonna put that money in- in other areas as well to combine this to get this startup going.
Charlie, you wanna take a shot at it?
Mr. Chairman?
No, the eight hundred thousand is the amount of money that's in the fund, Richie, and the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a estimated budget figure for a year of O and M with some, you know, some improvements, CIP in it.
But- but the seven hundred and fifty-
It would be borrowed against the eight hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, and the seven hundred- so, you're borrowing the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
From the eight hundred thousand. That's my understanding, correct?
I think that's what we'll have- I think that's what we're gonna have to do.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chairman?
But it's not one point five million, just so you understand, it's- it's okay.
Can we-
Charity, I'm sorry.
Can we move on to a next subject, or have you got this figured out yet?
Well, yeah, but are we-
Or are we doing- we're not gonna make any resolutions tonight anyway, right?
I think probably we need to talk a little more.
Well, I think this-
Well, I think we've kinda made it- we've kinda made a decision.
I thought we had totally sourced.
Thank you, Chair. And I just- and I think to move this forward, I think what the mayor suggested, I think, is a great way for us to get started and to get out there and start dealing with some of the stuff that our citizens are seeing, and that's to look at this SAB twenty-eight fund, use some of those funds to get rolling on some of these drainage issues that we haven't been taking care of without discussing the seven fifty, which was the budget figure, and the eight hundred thousand that's in the basin funds at this point. I think we just go the route that the mayor was suggesting so that we can start doing something this year.
And next year is what? Wait until the utility's adopted?
No, we could discuss it next year.
Do a supplemental?
Do a supplemental?
Go ahead.
We can deal with next year and next year for sure.
Thank you, Jerry, or Mr. President. But even- even if we use the- the funds of the mayor, the SAB twenty-eight, even by the time you put out some request for bid, you'd- we'd be in the winter of fourteen anyway, wouldn't we?
It'd be next spring before we basically start doing it.
So, and those are funds that we- we just used, we have to pay them back? Okay.
Can we, I'm gonna ask that you hold off on this until Monday night. I'm gonna ask Mr. Wor- Walter Storff to brief you on his preferred course of action for next year. How's that?
So, we're gonna come out of the meeting?
No, Monday night's council. I'll ask him to bring it on, yes.
Thank you, Mr.- Thank you, Mr. President. We've had all these discussions about if we're gonna borrow money from the SAB. Well, the SAB only has three million dollars in it, and probably two million of that is gonna need to go toward the software, and so, we can't use that like it's a unending, huge bag of money. So, I think if we're gonna do anything, we need to kinda vote on it if, I mean, if we're- I guess the decision is, are we gonna fund new money tonight, or are we gonna just push it off and let- see where the chips fly, lie? But everyone's proposing different options, but not- we haven't agreed on any of the details, so, thank you.
Well, if I have to put every ounce of my political collateral on the table, I will. I'm asking your support to fund a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar drainage program next year, and I would suggest that we borrow it either from the eight hundred thousand dollars or SAB and move on. And we'll see where the utility lies, falls.
That's true, that's true.
I can't work that more than anything at this point. I support uranium, I support- I won't support-
No, I just thought stay out of the- stay out of that peripheral nonsense for Ben. I love the humor, but we are- I'm dead serious right now, and we need- I'm dead serious right now. We need to make a decision. Are we gonna fund this next year? And she's got enough guidance, and if I got the approval from you, we'll work it out.
I don't know if we need that much, but I'm in support going that direction.
Show of hands. Amanda?
I'm not willing to support this as yet because I'm still hearing the killing of horses or the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse thing. If you're suggesting that for the 2014 budget, we're gonna borrow SAB funds, that still has to go through committee. It still has to have financing set up and a payback period set up. So, I don't see that happening in this process tonight.
If the direction is either from the drainage fund or the SAB twenty-eight fund, that gives us a little bit of latitude to make the budget work on paper, and then we can have the discussions in the utility support fund whether it's gonna be SAB twenty-eight or not.
Or other funds.
And if- if SAB twenty-eight says no, then in my mind, we revert back to the drainage fund.
Who here is on the SAB committee? You're all gonna squirt, aren't you? Okay.
Well, because, right, the council-
You guys are the ones that make the decision.
But it basically is looking to me like it's delayed. In other words, so- so basically, and I'm just trying to get clarification, so really, what we're trying to decide is right now, what I'm hearing support for is we're passing on this.
No.
Yeah, because we're not including it in the 2014 budget.
No. No, there was- there was like eight hands that said that they supported funding it.
We would- we would show this as an additional expense, and then we would show the revenue source being a loan proceeds. So, it will be- with the direction and the consensus just taken now, we would be adding it to the budget.
As a loan?
As a loan from one of the other funds.
That still has to go through committee.
The SAB twenty-eight loan would have to. Drainage would have to go through legal and finance and council to set up the terms and the, you know, interest rate and repayment period.
So, then, as the mayor had mentioned, the financial software was possibly gonna be financed through borrowing from the SAB that's no longer on the table?
That's a possibility, but quite honestly, with the interest rates as low as they are, I'm looking at Wells Fargo as more in line with where I wanna fund the- the software from.
So, in the 2014 budget, Pauline, is- is that the way the purchasing of the software is already specified in the 2014 budget?
One point three million is specified in the budget with the funding source being loan proceeds. So, this would be very similar. Thank you.
Any other questions? Now that I'm politically broke, shall we move on? I'm broke. Financial software, that was up, Pauline, that's handled through. You're gonna finance it? Is there anything we need to add for you next year? Parks Rec pavement repair, do we need to do, you know, that's what I pulled out. Jeff didn't ask for it. I know they need it. Let it go.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Jeff is looking at some ideas for 2015 budget, so we'll be hearing some more information on that for next year. He's got a long list.
I- thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do know that- that Sioux Park tennis courts, and they're gonna use money right now to redo the Wilson Park tennis courts at this point, but they're also looking at giving a major reconstruction, not reconstruction, but overlay of the Sioux Park resurfacing, thank you, of the Sioux Park tennis courts as they- that's the facility they use for the state tournaments and stuff like that, so they're trying to get money, budget for that. But Jeff had indicated it was 2015, he was gonna try to get that done, they're gonna do some temporary repairs until then, and they did not bring forth any further requests through me, at least I know- not that I know of, so, in case anybody else has different information, but.
Brad, so he- he wiggled his nose before you did, so he's there.
Thank you, Mr. President. A question that I have is when I look at a lot of these parking lot repairs in- in some of those neighborhood streets is, does the city have the ability? Do they own their own chip and seal equipment? I mean, is it- is this long history?
Not for years. They haven't done their own chip seal for years, and they don't have a slurry seal machine or anything like it.
Okay, thanks.
Charity.
You were talking about potentially adding this in, but we didn't have any kind of figure.
No.
So, it was just a goodwill gesture, hey, why don't we come up with something to give to Parks and Rec?
Especially for tennis courts.
Mr. Chair.
Amanda may know. Do you- do you have any idea how much we've been able to- my Parks and Rec got amputated probably three or four years back. Do you know how much we've been able to bridge that gap in the last couple of years?
On the Parks and Rec department?
Yeah. Yeah, Pauline, do you have any ideas? How much we've been able to make up when the Parks and Rec department, I mean, they, you know, they lost about a quarter of a million dollars from their budget?
Four years.
Yeah.
Those are wages.
Do you know how many or how much of that we've been able to make up? I know, because a lot of it, the quarter of a million is, if I recall from previous years, a figure, you know, the state would come through and do a- do a project and have a vegetated median and say, oh, by the way, Parks and Rec, you get to take care of that. And this has happened all over the city without the additional manpower. So, how close are we? Is this something we should be looking at today?
You know, I know the mayor added, what, fourteen thousand to their temporary wages this year. I don't know if they've been building up since 2009 or not. I don't think they have since 2010. I think that's part of why you wanna add it. You guys had looked at adding another twenty-seven thousand to the temporary wages in that Parks and Rec budget, which is an item that's on the discussion list.
Okay. And so then for Chad, is that going to be enough or?
The- I guess the point would be at this point-
The immediate needs?
Yeah. You know, Jeff's the new director, obviously, but he's a pretty- pretty resourceful guy. He's done a great job of managing what he has, and he understands the budgetary limitations of- of the city, and so, he's not bringing forth, in my- to my knowledge, any requests for any extra additional money this year just because it's, you know, the prudent thing to do. That's part of the reason he has the job, and so, I think he might be looking for an increase next year, but I'm not gonna volunteer giving him any more money at this point unless he brings forth a specific request, which I have not received, and I don't think anybody in this room has it either, so. And I just respect their- his opinion at this point. I do- and I do understand where you're coming from as far as the required extra maintenance keeps thrown on Parks and Rec. We're gonna have to do something in the future because of things like the promenade and the other projects that are going on.
Well, you know, we just, over- over the years, I've at least gotten a sense that it's a bad thing for department directors to be straight up with us and tell us what they need, and I just wanna make sure that this isn't happening. Yeah, exactly, that they're letting us know exactly what it is.
No, and I think- I think he's a very- I think the Parks and Recs, they're pretty, you know, forthright people, and I think you'd be very honest about it, but I think at this point-
Okay.
I- I have not, I mean, he's- this is the guy that got the tree problem solved in his town-
Right.
Without, you know, years before, ahead of everybody else, so, I- I'm, you know, thoroughly impressed with what I've seen so far, and I would think that if he had any real needs, he'd bring them forth.
Thank you.
Richie?
I need to answer Brad's question a little bit further is that he was asking about the chip seal. We used to do it years ago, and it came from the airport. That equipment, I believe, is surplused out already, so I- I'm pretty confident they've surplused it out so that we don't have that anymore, and we used to do it.
As streets are pretend, we brought a chipper from Hills material, but go ahead, Pauline.
In 2010, there was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars budgeted in temporary wages. In '11, it was cut to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's back to two forty-three four in 2014.
What do they get for forty-two fifty-four, which is pavement repair and maintenance? I assume that would be for tennis courts and stuff? Or something like-
In Parks, there's twenty thousand. I look at recreation.
I'm right, they're way under. But-
That's not what it is. Nothing in recreation.
Okay, twenty thousand dollars for street maintenance and repair and Parks Department, God know how many acres of parking they got.
It's usually getting- they usually do like a whole resurfacing project, and it gets paid out of CIP, quite honestly, the little bit of money they get. And we do have some money budgeted in the five-year CIP plan for parking lot improvements.
You know, I know that part of the- my source was people play tennis, were complaining about the condition of tennis courts at- at Stevens and Sioux Park and I think Akimot Rushmore Road.
Go to the baseball fields, you'll hear more complaining.
Yeah.
Everywhere you go, quite frankly. Uh, you should go to Harney.
I've done that, too. Okay, so, we'll let them deteriorate further, and next year, we'll need more money. Thank you, let's move on. I'm trying to help them. Economic development, the county dropped twenty-five thousand dollars. In my discussions with Ben, that they figured they could probably make it up with their In my discussions with Ben, that they figured they could probably make it up with their private fundraising. So is there any wish on this part? No? Moving forward. Don't worry about him. I just, that's long-term funding, there's issues there, but. Nope. Task force Ellsworth. They don't, they, but the consensus was.
I want to say something there, though.
On Ellsworth, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And this is on the Ellsworth Air Force Base, the funds that the county previously helped with that budget, with that group. I was once surprised that the county would pull their funds, knowing how vital that the economic impact is of Ellsworth. And I'm sure they have their reasons, but I would implore my colleagues to speak with their county commissioner and find out. I mean, seriously, let's give these people a call, and let's talk to them. We're elected officials, as they are. I mean, they have to understand the impact that Ellsworth Air Force Base has on this entire regional area, not just Rapid City and Pennington County, as we all know. So I would encourage my colleagues, even though the group testified in front of us, shouldn't say testified, but spoke before us, and said that their budget was good, withstanding that loss. But I would hope that we would all speak to our county commissioner and see what we can do to help them from that standpoint. Thank you.
There's a question also at Parks and Rec for additional seasonal wages. Bonnie?
I thought that we should fund that up to the 2010 full level and suggested the 27,000. I would go, I'd be comfortable with 10,000. For Parks and Rec, because they're bringing on the Promenade, not to mention all the other projects they've been, have brought on. But I think they keep every, you know, new projects constantly, and they don't, you know, their time gets cut.
Concur. Steve?
You know, I struggle with this when we do these things, and we did this last year during the budget hearings, but, and it's all in good intention, and I understand that, but we have to trust that our department directors know what they need, and they will communicate it to us. They're paid very well to do that, and I think we all know that. And I'm hoping that we would put our trust in them, that if they really need something, they are the subject matter experts, and that they will bring that to us because they're paid to do that. And if they're not able to do that, then we have other questions we need to ask those directors. And so, again, we need to make sure that we put our trust in those people because they are the subject matter experts, and they know what they need. Thank you.
Certainly. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's important to recognize that during the budget process, I asked Jeff Begler, our new director of Parks and Recreation, about this specific line item. And we talked, I asked because there had been very little of an increase, I don't remember what it was, but then I asked, well, could we put in some more? And he said, yes, but, you know, we're doing pretty well as we are because we've gotten, we've gotten the Meadowbrook Grill, that's off the books now. That's one of the reasons why the budget looks lower than it was before. That albatross is off our books, and so that's a big deal. And so I asked, I said, you know, I think we need to take steps to start restoring this funding. And he said, I think, I think, and we came up with a number of 14,400 is the starting point to, you know, start restoring that line item. If you want to add more, you can. He told me he didn't need more than 14,400. And that's what I put in, that's what we put in the budget. So if you want to add more, I'm sure he isn't going to say, please don't do this, I'm begging you not to add more money to my budget, but he was also, he was also, you know, being, you know, he's, he's, he's a good director, and he's been able to find other cost savings, and he's brought a fresh set of eyes to the process. And I think before you add this in, you might want to defer this and ask him. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Other comments?
Just one comment, Jerry, you skipped the matching, matching money up above that Brad wanted to talk about.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. If the application for the federal highway path sidewalk trail grant is successful, and maybe this is where we should handle it, is how are we going to fund the match if it's here? And has that been discussed between planning and public works? I guess that would be the question to ask, right? Yes, John?
Didn't you say this was budgeted in? If they were asking for the grants in 2013 or 2014, the money was budgeted in?
If they knew prior to budgeting time that they were going to be asking for these grants, they should have budgeted the matching amount in their budget already. At this point, number, we have two questions. Did they already budget for the matching funds? If not, how much is that? Because we have no idea.
Do we know? Do we know if they? This is a fairly new program, by the way, go ahead.
Well, but applying for grants is not a new program. But it's all I'm saying is, is that I guess that's something I want, whether it's a bike path or a sidewalk grant or anything else, I guess that's something I'd like to know is, 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 applying for grants is a hell, excuse me, heck of a good funding source, I mean, is a big, large funding source for this community. And if we don't have the matching money in our budget, why are we applying for grants? That's my, that's my deal, and so I'd like to, you know, we're not going to, I'd just like to know what that number is.
A good question, I'm sorry.
That's it, so.
A good question then would be to, to Transportation and Public Works is, if we are going to apply for these federal highways sidewalk trail type grants, are we adequately funded to meet the matching requirements? Is that a fair question?
That is a fair question, and in fact, it's probably a question you should be asking every time there is a request to apply for a grant.
Yes.
That comes before council or committee. You should be asking the question, what is this city's matching requirements? Is it budgeted, is it not? I don't see the grants.
I, how do we, can you ask that question, or should I ask that question? Thank you. Richie?
I think Pauline answered most everything in here, but this conversation came up at the Public Works Committee meeting Tuesday, and I believe we had one other conversation about it, and Paul, Patsy, getting the Ps mixed up here, the Ps in the pod, but anyway, Patsy is, has not said anything about needing some matching fund yet, so at this point, I'm going to take, they take it for granted that Pauline is on the right track, that they don't need any additional funding at this point.
So let's make it clear that transportation planning and so forth is a different function in public works, and they don't pay for concrete, I don't believe. So let's make sure we got the answer. If we go for the grant, let's make sure we got the match to buy the concrete.
Something, too, I just want you guys to know, I did sit through a DOT meeting on this transportation alternative program, these different grants. The 18.05% match can also be a soft match, which means special interest groups, staff time, materials, things like that. So all of that counts, too, and I think that would probably be a little difficult to budget for ahead of time. But we'll find out what Brett says, what their method is for planning for these.
Any other items before us that have not been answered? Everybody totally, absolutely ready to go home? Pauline? Well, the wildlife shooter fee, I think, is an issue of, needs to be discussed at with that wildlife committee and say, are we paying too much, not enough, and it should be handled later. That's not really a budget issue. If they can do it cheaper. That's where I'd start, and, you know, maybe we're not paying them enough. I'm just kidding. I just thought I'd throw it in there, I mean, we're, but check, Bill, let us know. Demolition amount, this is for removal of substandard housing. We're, what, 25,000 or 40,000, if I remember right? Bonnie?
Amanda, when we were in that meeting on affordable housing, when she talked about rerouting that money, was part of that was possibly to go to demolition? Do you remember? Or Richie, do you remember that?
I'm thinking a different, maybe it's a different line item, but I remember Brad telling us we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 100,000 in that line item, but, yes, that, yes. And then, so what, I believe what they're looking for right now is, not in the budget, as I understand it, not this year's budget, but probably in the future, 20,000?
Right, okay, as of the end of July, there's $141,000 in the repair and demolition fund. That's the cash in fund. In 2013, they had $25,000 budgeted for professional services or for demolition, but in 2014, they increased it to 55,000. 141.
Okay, right? Bonnie? I'd say leave it the way it is.
Okay, this is my new suggestion, Jerry. You'll be impressed. Where since we added 2,000 to Allied Arts and 2,000 to Health and Human Services, then I think we should take that money, the 4,000, out of the travel budget. That will still, I first recommended 10,000, and so that's just 4,000 to come out of that. You said you wanted people to travel more. However, the last three or four years, we've been under $11,000, and we're budgeted for 22, 25.
22,300.
And when other people bump the budget up, travel budget up to 18, 20,000, that's when all hell broke loose in the city, and everyone write-ups about, you know, councilmen spending so much money traveling. So I think taking the 4,000 out of the mayor and council's travel budget is a wise thing to do, and it helps balance the other four.
Do we have a show of hands supporting that?
I didn't get it.
So there's $4,000 taken out of the travel, mayor's and council travel budget to pay for the arts and council 2,000 and the other 2,000.
Charity, do you have a question?
You want to give $4,000 to?
We had already said we were, earlier, that we were going to put 2,000 to Allied Arts and 2,000 to Health and Human Services.
Oh, that's just to fix the error, because that's what the mayor presented to us.
Right, and so I'm saying, as a compromise, to not cut the travel budget, the full 10 that I first suggested, that we'd just cut it to four, and that would cover those two items.
And then if we have excess travel, we can take it out of contingency.
We've only, we've only gone up to about 11,000 the last three or four years.
Yeah, I know, because travel's become an evil word in the city.
A dirty word, yeah. I think one year was just 5,000.
Certainly, the mayor wants to speak.
I think that would be, I mean, that would be fine. I think it's important to recognize that the city council once had a $60,000 travel budget. And it's been, you know, it's been cut significantly over, over the years to what it is, to what it is now. So.
I, you know what, I'm sorry. Heat of the moment, I, I really think that this council should not be hesitant to attend legal city meetings and that type of training because it's to the benefit of this committee or community. I mean, I don't think you should be going to Hawaii and going to a surfing class. That's not what we're doing, or you're not going to get on a cruise, that's not the point. But if you're going to go to somewhere and sit down and learn how to be a better city council person, that is certainly a legitimate thing. And I've done enough of that kind of traveling, and those of you that have know that's no vacation. You're working. And I think it's very legitimate, and I think it would raise our level of professionalism and understanding and everything tremendously. So I don't, I don't know if we should cut it, because I guess if we get close to the edge, I'd spend more and get it out of contingency. But please, don't be so conservative that you go colloquial. You know, the state of South Dakota had a traveling restriction on their staff. They couldn't leave the state and go to an EPA conference or nothing. And just think what that does to your staff's professional development. I would not want to do that to our staff in police and fire and finance and engineering. That training is so essential. I'm sorry? Well?
Well, I think we need a show of hands, there's been a proposal.
Okay.
I was proposing, it would still give us, it was 22,000, I think.
It was 18, then?
And then, yeah, and then to take it four, so it'd be down to 18, and we haven't gotten even close to that in the last four years.
Okay, is there a show of hands for support of Bonnie's motion? So be it. Anything else?
Great idea, Bonnie, great idea.
Bonnie, or Amanda, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman, for that compliment. Yep. And so, there are two other things that I forgot to mention at the beginning, and I just wanted to make sure that we do discuss them before we get down to identifying. I think there's just one other funding source that needs to be identified. But the first one was Richie Nordson brought up land trust. Richie, did you need any money, or was that just a discussion point for land trust?
Oh, yeah, we're going to need some money. But let me get some more data from Barb Garcia, and then as soon as we get that figured out, then we'll bring it forward. But right now, at this point, I'm going to say it's probably not going to make it into the 2014 budget.
And then, Jerry, the other one I have written down, sorry I missed it the first time, you know, three hours ago when we started this. Well, you had brought up a public relations customer service FTE. Do you want to pass on that during the 2014 budget as well?
I think we do, but it's something we absolutely must do in the future. Raise my travel budget, I'll do it.
So then, those are the only other two things I show, and then Pauline, if you would correct me, but the only other outstanding business, I think everything else has been identified, except the police dispatch equipment has not been identified with a funding source.
That's 194,000.
Two other things that you guys put on there, and I don't know how serious you were, but this one, but the Wavy, the 400 for Wavy, and then Bonnie had added the 500 for voluntary recognition with the RSVP.
I didn't ask for 400 for. She was short 400.
No, I put it on the list at the beginning of this meeting, so it's good to know how you hang on me every word.
So.
Mr. President, do you want me to address that issue? Okay, the 500 for RSVP volunteers, a lot of these people are over 85 and 90 years old, and I think we need to boost up some support for them and recognition for them, and I'd like to budget 500 for that.
Certainly.
It is not my intent to create a scandal by mentioning this, but I, I know that the RSVP volunteers are often not recognized, and out of my office supply budget, we are, we are buying the little pins, I'm not wearing one right now, but the little pins.
Shocking.
For each of the volunteers, and they're about a dollar and, a dollar and 30 cents. So we're going to be spending probably about 500 of pins out of my office supply budget. I don't think that you need to add any, any more unless you think there's additional recognition that needs to be done, but.
Well, I tend to think so. I think we should be very appreciative of our elderly citizens stepping up and volunteering, whether that's, if you're going to give a pin to everyone, then that doesn't distinguish for maybe some people that have had extra long service, or, you know, it could just be buying extra cakes, or whatever the partygoers want to do.
I would support adding this in, but Bonnie, maybe you and I can sit down with Angie and talk about what recognitions we would like to do, and we might be able to just do it within the city's, or within the mayor's office supply budget.
So after three hours and 10 minutes of heated debate and discussion and one 10-minute cigarette break, the only things that we're funding with additional money, and the one that I see is maybe not. maybe not identified for funding, is the dispatch center. We need to have that one clarified, correct? Compass, I'm sorry, 194,000. 195, excuse me. And we have the compass money that's coming out of contingency, and we agreed on the stormwater drainage fee somewhere or somehow, if I can remember how that happened. All I know is we did, thank you, and I'm politically broke. And I think that's it.
I make a motion to fund the council out of undesignated cash, one-time purchase.
Dispatch?
Or dispatch, the police.
Contingency? Is it, whoa, 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 just a minute, is it undesignated cash or out of council contingency?
Unless we're going to add it in and then take it out.
Okay, I, just a minute. You kind of have a look of shock in your face.
Oh, I don't have a look of shock, because we talked about that Monday night a little bit. It just, it would bring the undesignated cash to balance the budget to approximately 1.2 million, just so you're aware.
Okay. The question, the only other question we haven't asked about is the Consumer Price Index, and that comes when? The vote on that, if we're going to do it? No? If I remember the resolution, it comes at the, should. Bonnie?
Sorry, Mr. President, there was noise down here, and I couldn't hear what you said.
Talking about the CPI. Consumer Price Index adjustment to our property, general fund, property tax. I wish, I wish we put that together at the very beginning of the year, rather than at the end of this budget process. It sure makes a lot more sense, wouldn't it? Can we do that next year or the year after? Let me back up. If, if we were going to do an adjustment in our property tax base, we should do it when we're beginning to put the budget together, saying we will allow up to 2%, or something like that, versus at the end, because if we do it now, the budget's already put together. So why are we raising the base after the budget's already done? And we just got to figure out a way to spend it. That doesn't logical, is it?
But you need to determine first if you need it. Not, not, not put it out there and then try and spend it, determine if you.
Okay, but I'm just, yeah, I understand that, but your, your property tax, if we've been going through the budget process, and we say that our budgets need to increase 2% because of inflation, and it's been done through a budgeting process, and the CPI is 2% in my books, if that's been done throughout the budgeting process, and the adjustments have been made for the raises, we've already taken a CPI. No. Yeah, in order for the resolution to pass, but I'm I agree, you know, in theory, what you're, you're, you need to determine what your budget should be, and that with your, your property valuation will tell you what your tax rate is, and that will tell you what you're going to pay taxes, correct?
We need to ask a question, is there support to draft a resolution to take the CPI?
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
One of the things that you can take into consideration, as far as concerning the CPI now versus at the beginning or whenever, like I just said, we're looking at 1.2 million in undesignated cash to balance the budget. So your comfort level with our revenue projections needs to be very good. They're not all my revenue projections, though. They're not.
What you're saying is we are within 1%.
So the option is, if you do choose to take the CPI and not add additional expenditures at this point, it would reduce the amount of the dependency on the undesignated cash to balance the budget.
Does everybody copy that? Everybody, yes?
Pauline, I had a question down here, and so, just for my clarification as well, because it was a learning lesson for me. The county, basically, on everything that I've read and, and based on the articles in the paper and the county information itself, roughly increased in 2014 assessments overall roughly about 7%. My assumption was that if the property assessments raised 7%, the city would automatically see that increase, but it was explained to me, thank you. So for clarification, that's not how the city budgets. It may be how the county or the school district, but that's not how the city's budget is actually calculated. So there is no increase based on the county's assessments.
Your last comment confuses me. We don't request taxes based on a mill levy. It's not the mill levy that goes up 3% or CPI, it's not the mill levy that goes up the growth amount, it's the total tax dollars requested. So we requested $14 million in 2013. So in 2014, we can request that $14 million again, plus any growth, plus CPI or 3%, whichever is less. But that $14 million is spread across the base of, or across assessed valuation of the city. So depending on where that is, our mill levy could go up or down. If it goes down, obviously, the tax, depending on the valuation of the property, their tax bill could go down. But if their assessment went up, which caused our mill levy to go down, they may not see a decrease in taxes.
Especially considering that the city is only one entity that's contributing to the tax on that tax bill.
And the one with the lowest.
The lowest collection, correct.
18% is city.
Thank you.
18, 18% is city.
Everybody got that? Yes, Steve.
Sorry, colleagues, I have one last question on that. So what about the actuals, right? I mean, you're talking about what we're requesting, but what about?
If we request a specific dollar amount, that is what we get. The other option is to take the maximum, which would include CPI, but then that can also be adjusted depending upon utilities, because they don't get utilities and railroad information until after our process is already done, for the most part. So if you choose maximum, you can get a little bit more than you actually requested. But if you specify a dollar amount, that's what you'll get.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a question. Pauline?
Sorry?
If we establish a property tax budget, correct? If that's divided over the assessed value, that's basically where your mill levy comes from, correct?
Correct. But we don't even, they don't even have the assessed valuation figured until November 1.
So reality is, you know, the 2% or the CPI, or whatever it is, is strictly a way of adding money to your dollar budget, whether you need it or not?
You could say that.
But if you sit down and do a real budget and say this, I've spent $14 million last year, and this year I got to spend $14,500,000 because these prices of fuel or sand or concrete's gone up, we can't take that unless we've taken a CPI where we're allowed to, or?
You get the, you can take the growth and you can take the CPI. Now, honestly, if.
But I mean, let's assume there's.
If you don't need it, if you still have, where you only think you're going to spend $14 million in property taxes, you can still take the CPI. You don't have to prove that you need the CPI, it just grows your base. Well, it would decrease the amount of our reliance on the undesignated cash, in our situation. There are some towns that don't use undesignated cash to balance their budget. And I know at one time, I think it was City of Custer talked about, well, I'd like to decrease our tax request, but what, for a year, but what happens if I need it in the following year? It's gone. So at, at that point, it's, you, in my opinion, you either maintain it or you take what you can to help with operations. Because theoretically, especially with CPI, if your cost of goods are going up and you don't take the CPI, you just lost buying power.
Or you may not be able to buy what you need to buy.
Correct.
I mean, like, let's say, your, your costs of, of fuel and sand or tires or whatever you buy in your police and fire and streets and snow removal increased significantly due to a high rate of inflation because of the, this rule, you may not be able to buy as much of what you need.
Correct, because you're limited.
Conceivably, you'll have a shortfall, you can't, you can't put fuel in a vehicle, you can't do that, correct?
Right, because you are limited to the 3% CPI, even if cost of living is really 4.5%, you can only take 3%.
But that's if you take the CPI.
If you take CPI.
Otherwise, you're limited to your growth, which could be an increase in demand of services, which is not necessarily
Correct.
a good thing either. It's not real simple, is it? So the wishes of this committee on the CPI, if I may ask that question, are we at higher risk by not taking it?
Well, I, in general, think that, you know, if you're not taking your cost of living increase, then your buying power just keeps shrinking. However, this year, if we're looking at bringing on a utility fee for constituents, I'm very fine about not adding anything else to their bill. Because fact is that we know cost of living goes up, and the years that we haven't taken it, then we've, you know, we're kind of backtracking. So anyway, so that's how I kind of feel about it at this point, and we don't have near the list of unmet needs. Well, I shouldn't say we don't have near, we don't have as many unmet needs that I'm aware of at this time that I was aware of last year.
Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. President. And the other comments, because it's been a huge learning curve too over the last year, is since we're talking about the drainage utility fee and not taking the CPI, something I want to caution everybody is just because this council doesn't take the CPI this year doesn't mean that we can't claw back three years. So in trying to justify not taking the CPI because we're going to institute a drainage utility fee, that is a false hope to our taxpayers, and I want to be perfectly clear on that. Because you could pass a drainage utility fee, pay $27 a year, and then have a clawback, and your taxes go up anyways. So I think we need to sell the drainage utility fee on its own merit, not as a supplement of not taking the CPI. Thank you.
Richie?
I'm still wrestling with this CPI as well yet, and I haven't made up my mind. And I know, I'm trying to work up a metaphor that kind of works in this, and I'd like to visit, have a little more time to visit with Pauline about a different way to approach this, and I don't want to do it tonight. The, the other aspect of this has to do with the, the down in my area, we're looking at the flood insurance, and those people are getting hit with, you know, anywhere to $1,000 to $1,300 this next year for the, for their flood insurance if they haven't already got tagged for that right now. And so that's coming into play for me. And if we get this utility maintenance fee coming in as, as well, that's another whammy that's going to be put on them. But what I'm struggling with on this whole thing is the base. If we don't, if we don't keep, have the base growing, and if, using Amanda's analogy here, to use the clawback on it, maybe that's where I can get a little more comfort level on it to do, to do the clawback on it, going back as far as three years. I just haven't made up my mind on it yet, because I've got so many factors in the equation.
Brad?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm not sure exactly where I sit on it, but to me, we, they're two completely different issues. Because to me, the CPI is, is growing the base, and I mean, it doesn't matter what other industry you're in, our cost of doing business out there is going up, and, and that's just a reality. And I think this, just like you say, the tires and oil and everything for the city, and I think we might be cheating ourselves in the long run on the base. And, and I, and I do feel for the taxpayers. You know, I was, looked at some flooding issues on, up on Brookside here the other day, and you know, this city's been run by great people in the past, visionary people, but, but they didn't keep, you know, the rooftops grew faster than our, our stormwater plans, and that's a separate issue to me than the CPI. And I don't want to be a penny wise and a pound short on, on worried about people paying drainage utility fees when, I mean, ask the people who had their houses backed up into FEMA now, if they'd have been happy to have, be paying this fee and to have, to have kept the projects up, and that wouldn't have happened, you know? And then, and then to top on that, now that you've got the insurance fee, so some people could get hit, you know, three times. But, but I, I see them, I see the CPI and the, and the drainage deal, to me, as a separate issue. Thanks.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think anybody has said anything that's particularly wrong, but just now, Brad, when we were talking about FEMA, that happened to do with better topography resolution in terms of maps, where they found that some had the topography to support runoff and others didn't, and that was, that was the case up on Nebraska Street, for instance, where it was, it's very, very flat, where the water's supposed to flow, and therefore it spreads out. But one of the things I think we certainly need to keep track of, and it might almost, well, it's impossible to predict, and you can only measure it after the fact, is that, yes, as, as the cost of living goes up and the cost of materials go up, if we don't take the CPI, we lose buying power. However, there's always that growth as well. So if we're progressing as a city and doing the right things, then there's growth to help offset that. So as, you know, even as prices go up, it's kind of like getting a raise on your job. There's only 40 hours in the week, perhaps, but i- if you get that raise, there's more money coming in, even though there's more money going out to, to buy those necessities. And it's, it's tough, you know, because here we are, trying to predict what's going to happen between now and the end of next year in terms of growth and, and money coming in based on sales tax revenues. It, it, it's tough, it really, really is. But I, I think as we wrestle with the fact that we've got a drainage utility ahead of us, which comes on the backs of taxpayers, that, you know, we, we can only hit these people so many times, because people, you know, every one of us has seen gas go up, groceries go up, our cost of living has gone up. You know, those of us in the government sector have been without a raise for three years, even while cost of living has, has gone up, and we've just had to, you know, pull up our bootstraps and, and deal with it. And I'm not saying we as a city just need to pull up our bootstraps, but we need to be cognizant of the fact that along with the potential for CPI to bring more money in, growth does as well. So as we talk about affordable housing and a community that needs it so much, we need to be careful too what we levy upon our constituents. Thank you.
Steve, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that the cost of living or the cost of goods and the cost of the city to do what it needs to do for its citizens is not something separate from what the mayor has, has brought to us in the budget. It's not some separate entity. It's part of it. Those costs are reflected in what those directors need to do their job to deliver their services to the citizens. And some of us are speaking like the cost of living, you know, the things, if we don't take the CPI, then we're going to fall behind. That's patently false, because our directors would be telling us so. Our directors would be coming to us saying, I can't meet my needs, I cannot deliver my services that I have to in my department. So it's not something external to what we're dealing with here in the budget. It is part and parcel and the very soul of the budget that we're dealing with that the mayor has presented to us. It's not something separate, so, thank you.
Amanda?
Thank you, Council President. The only point that I wanted to bring up is that I agree with Alderman Laurenti that the mayor prepared the budget based on the director's input, as well as his own, and forecasting. One of the things I tried to point out, and I just think the council needs to be aware of it, is that there are several revenue streams that are making up that budget, and they're all estimates, every single one of them. So if sales tax, as an example, does not come in as budgeted, it has to be made up someplace else. We've been fortunate, the last two years, there was an excess of $3 million in 2011, there was an excess of $5.5 million. there was an excess of $5.5 million in 2012. The excess of $5.5 million in 2012 was then spent or allocated in supplemental appropriations. So we ended up balanced but zero in our coffers. We still had $3 million, the mayor's included $1 million in the 2014 budget out of those coffers. There's $2 million. Pauline likes to have a million, or as much as she can get. So I just want to caution everybody, because like I said, I think sales tax for 2014, I hope it's there, but 2012 actuals plus 2% plus 2%, that seems a little stretchy to me. So there's a possibility that we could be a million dollars short. Not bad, since we're $2 million above as of June 30th, let's hope that holds this year, because that adds another $2 million to our coffers. But that's why one of the revenue streams understood by the council. Thank you.
Everybody tired enough? Quick comment?
I have one last thing, because I, I think that was very good, Amanda, and I appreciate that. But I think that supports what I'm about to say, is that, and we all deal with this with government, but the bottom line is, there's a reason why our federal government has a consumer, a consumer confidence index. They measure that, because it's a big part of what our economy does, and the amount of revenue that's driven by the economy, and the people who earn the money have the ability to spend that money. And when government increases taxes, consumer confidence almost has an inverse relationship with increased taxes. So it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we are prudent and disciplined in what we spend, so that the taxpayers can keep more of their hard-earned money, so that we can rely on those sales tax revenues that we do heavily rely on. But that's more reason for us to be prudent and disciplined in how we spend their money, so that they can be confident that they're spending the money and not us spending it for them.
Richie?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is why I'm confused, or I haven't made up my mind, more so along this line, because as the new Public Works Committee Chair, our department directors are coming forward saying this is the minimum that we can get by with, and if you want to give us some more money, we've got a way to spend it. They've got a use for that funding. They can always find more, they've got a three-inch ring binder out there, and that's full of projects, just waiting for the, the money to come forward on it. And when, when we start, that's why I'm still, haven't made up my mind on it, is because we've got all these projects out there, we're not funding them, the drainage has been on, on the shelf for 60 years, that's another source that we could be utilizing, and anyway, it's just, there's just a lot of unmet needs out there that we're not, we're not willing to take a real close, hard look at doing. Thank you.
All right. Great discussion. I am just going to say one thing, and that is we talked about the CPI and budgeting, without anybody throwing grenades or rocks or shooting each other, I commend you. Good job. I think this council would appreciate a little more discussion and maybe training on revenue sources, in particular, property taxes and how it does, because the only concern I really have is, I go back to the post-Vietnam era, when we were punking along at 3% or 4%, and all of a sudden overnight, we were at 7% to 10% inflation, interest rates were 15% to 23%. You know, we're just coming out of another war period where there's been a lot of borrowing, and God only knows. I just want us prepared if we get into such an inflationary cycle that we're able to survive. I mean, we, that's, that's as bad or worse than things shutting down. I mean, because that's what happens. So the discussion is good tonight, I think we're safe, and I agree, the drainage is probably our number one. If there are not, yes, Pauline?
Clarification. Are you guys wanting to have the meeting on August 27th, or is this it? I'm asking, I just want to know for staffing purposes, do we have anything more to discuss on August 27th?
Folks? Do we want, do you want...
Everybody should go tour the animal shelter.
Or dispatch center. You know, I, I guess that we should ask, you know, the CPI, I, I sense there's not a... I'll tell you personally, if, if I could get the drainage thing through, I'm not going to worry about that right now. I've expressed my concern about inflationary costs, we need to watch, and I agree, if our division managers or superintendents or, excuse me, department directors are actually allowed to say this is what we really, really need next year, I'm not overly worried about CPI, because they're giving us a budget for next year based on what they know, which is as good as any prediction we'll ever make. I'm comfortable with that. And I hope they are. Yes, Brad?
And part of my ignorance is probably the first year of budget, but what I, what I have, why I thought it was two different issues was, and I see, you know, streets are probably a totally different funding source, but, but I mean, when I look at, we've got 400 miles of streets, and 60% of them are, you know, below, that, that's what I, that's what I mean. We, we're falling behind, but maybe not on what we're talking about here on the general fund, the, the, the stuff that impacts our taxpayers. So that's, you know, I, I'm really pitching to the wrong, probably under the wrong venue here, but, so that's, that's where I hate to give up money.
We can't make up for decades of neglect in one year. I think that if we can get this drainage utility through and begin funding that, it's going to free up some money that's presently going into drainage, will go to streets. It's not all we need, but you know, it's a whole lot closer than we've been for a long time. In the last four or five years, we've improved that. It's a step in the right direction. As you get reelected the next few years, you can add more to it. Amanda?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple other clarification points too. Brad, I don't think you're preaching to the wrong one, because the streets are covered in multiple revenue sources, and general fund is one of them, but as Jerry said, it's taken years to get here, it'll take years to get out of here. The clawback that I had mentioned too, and that's why, considering the CPI this year, I'm actually, if I had to decide on it tonight, would vote against it, only because the budget and the surplus in undesignated cash that we have, I think, would get us through next year. And the clawback period that we have, and this is my only concern, is that it's still available for three years. The issue is, is that all of a sudden, if we did have a financial crisis and we had to take the maximum, Pauline, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we can clawback for three years and it's a total of up to 10%? And a 10% hit would be hard on anybody. So that's, that's the one thing to consider, whether you're trying to take a CPI progressively, or if you put it off, and then all of a sudden, you have to have it in order to help out. So that's a consideration to have. Other than that, I think the other considerations, and I think we've talked about them a little bit, and that is with the healthcare changes that are coming in 2014, that's going to hit everybody. With the property taxes, that's going to hit everybody. The drainage utility fee, that's going to hit everybody. There's a, and I'll, I'll say it again, I think I said it from the dais too, but we're in August, and I don't know if everybody else remembers, I do, because I made a point of putting it on my calendar. January, we all, as a family, took a $3,600 hit because of IRS regulations. So you may not remember it, because it's been eight months, but already for this year, you lost $3,600, because the IRS has already taken an additional $3,600 per family. So my point is, is that, and I think it was brought up before, I don't know how much more our citizens can take as far as coming up and reaching into that, I believe the term was used earlier today, sock, buried in the backyard. I don't think, I don't know how much more they can take. But that's why I like this discussion, because I think we can make better decisions if we're all aware of what the pros and cons are of everything. And so one thing is, is by not taking the CPI every year, the potential is there, especially if we run into a crisis, that all of a sudden, we could take a huge hit if the city needed it. So, thank you.
It would just sure be nice if some of the other taxing authorities had the conscience. I mean, it always seems to fall on our shoulders. Our taxpayers expect a lot out of their property taxes, and it covers police department, and that's it. So, I mean, it, you know, we're there to try to help them out of, of the things that are created. I mean, we can't fight the federal government, but we have all of these taxing authorities that are getting theirs. When do we get real with the people that, you know, I'm sorry, but we cannot meet your expectations? Your expectations, what you think is now new, the paradigm has to shift. And so when we talk about the PR person and the, you know, things like this down the road, to, to really work on that education component, because it's a different dynamic than it was 50 years ago, and, and we need to just get straight, straight up with them.
Brad?
I think the city should hire that young man that came in here and explained that FEMA situation to those 400 people whose houses, that guy was slick. Huh? Do you remember him, Mr. Mayor? I think we ought to hire him.
Well, you know, this, this discussion tonight, we're on, I assume we're on the TV somewhere, and there's at least one person in rhapsody listening to this honest, frank discussion, and I hope they're encouraged by it. With that... The only thing we have, as far as I'm concerned, is the, the Consumer Price Index election, and is there a motion here to draft it, so we can vote it up or down, or should we just not take it? What, what's the feeling here? Because that's the only thing we have left. Okay, is there, let's do that. Show of hand, is there a feeling at this point to draft a resolution for the new CPI? Raise your right hand. There isn't one, so it looks like it ain't going to happen. So is there anything left undone from staff, the mayor, you, attorney, fire department, anybody that's still awake? You can call us live at... No, we're not going to talk to dogs anymore. A motion to adjourn was made by the, our guest, Chad. He keeps leaving and going and coming back, I just... Okay. Those in favor, aye, aye. You're done. Thank you.